We have George. We have a couple of town councillors. And here is that.
Yes, they're here for one of your discussions.
Okay.
So I'm just hold, okay, I now see Amherst Media. And I see Johanna has joined us. You're good to go, Jack.
Okay. Um. Bring that up. Okay, so welcome to the Amherst Planning Board Meeting of July 7th, 2021. My name is Jake Jumpsack and as the Chair of the Amherst Planning Board, I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:32 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is available via Amherst Media livestream. Minutes being taken. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, the Planning Board Meeting, including public hearings, will be conducted via remote means using Zoom platform. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may do so by following a link shown on the slide. This link is also available on the meeting agenda posted on the town's website. Calendar listing for this meeting or go to the Planning Board webpage and click on the most recent agenda which lists the Zoom link at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public will be permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so for reasons of economic hardship or despite best efforts, we will post on the town of Amherst website on audio or video recording, transcript or other comprehensive recording of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So Board Member, Board Members, I will take a roll call, recall your name and mute yourself, answer and firmly leave and then please list yourselves back on mute. Maria Chow? Tom Long is not with us, so he gave us a heads up on that. Andy Madugo?
Present.
Good, all right. Doug Marshall?
Present.
Janet McDowall?
Here.
Johanna Newman?
Present.
And myself. So we definitely have a quorum. That's good. So Board Members, if technical issues arise, please let Pam know if necessary. We may need to pause to Borelli to fix the problem and then continue the meeting. The session may be suspended while the technical issues are addressed. The minutes will note. If this has happened, please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment. I will see you raised hand and call on you to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. Opportunity for public comment will be provided during the general public comment period and is reserved for comments regarding items that are not on tonight's agenda. Public comment may also be heard at other appropriate times during the meeting. Please bear aware that the Board will not respond to comments during general public comment period. Please indicate if you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If he has joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your telephone. When called on, please identify yourself by saying your full name and address and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can express their views for up to three minutes and at the discretion of the Planning Board Chair, if speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation will be disconnected from the meeting. So, and we have no minutes? Pam, correct?
No, not tonight.
Okay. So we can solicit public comment. And I see one hand raised. Janet Keller?
Hi Janet.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, everybody. So my public comment is about I had a rough week and then I got late to your notice and just assuming that the materials in the packet would be there and they weren't. And so I just wanted to tell you that and I know that Chris offers the option, but I just wanted to tell you about that and I like, very much liked the opportunity to comment, but that made it quite a bit more difficult. Thanks.
Very good. All right, so we can get into the agenda and it looks like 6:35, it's 6:37, so we can get into SBR 2021 11. Greenfield Savings Bank, 6-22 University Drive. Request a site plan review approval under Section 5.043 for a drive-through facilities of the zoning bylaw to install an ATM as an accessory use to an existing bank authorized under Section 3.358 of the zoning bylaw, including minor grading and paving with the existing parking area, which is map 13B versus 30 in the BL zoning districts. With that, so I'm just getting my preamble's here set up because I tried to go paperless. There we go. Okay, sorry. And, okay, so Board Member disclosures, please. And I see none. All right, so the applicant? Presentation? Who do we have for that? Chris?
We have Tony Wenceski of SVE Associates and I think he's in the attendees and he would need to be moved into the panelists.
Okay.
He's in the process. So there's also somebody named Jim?
Tony?
Yes, hi. This is Tony Wenceski with SVE Associates. Jim is my client, so if you can bring him on, that would be great. If there's questions relating to Greenfield Savings Bank and operations, he would be the one to answer those questions and I will give the presentation on the site plan for the Board.
Okay.
Jim should be coming over. There's Tony. Okay, Jim is here.
Okay.
We don't have his video. He has his video off. But he is able to speak.
Okay. Tony, you ready to roll?
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone. My name is Tony Wenceski. I am an engineer with SVE Associates. We're contracted with Greenfield Savings Bank to put this application and site plan together for their desire to install an ATM at the northwest corner of the New Market Center. It's right at the intersection of University and Amity. And I don't know, Chris, can you bring up the site plan on the screen? That would be awesome if you could do that. Essentially, we looked at three different areas on the site to place this ITM and came up with the the northwest corner for a number of reasons, which is stated in our in our narrative, but just to go through the positions and why we chose this.
Tony, can you, Tony, can I stop you for one second?
Sure.
Okay, because I lost my packet here. Hold on one sec. Okay, can you all see the packet? For the agenda anyway?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that.
And it should be at the end of this.
Okay.
This. There we go.
Thank you. Whoops. Where did we go?
It should be right there. That's where we are. Perfect.
All right, I'm sorry, Tony.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine. Thank you for bringing it up. So this shows the position of the preferred alternative of the ATM, which is on the northwest corner. I'm sure everybody's familiar with university. There's a drainage square between the parking area and university, which is a wetland area. We went before the Conservation Commission and received approval to go ahead and which is in order conditions to go ahead and construct this. Now we're before the Planning Board to obtain site plan review. As I said, we looked at three different areas to do this. The other areas you'd have to blow up into the site, but if you were out there a little farther to the south, there's seven isolated parking stalls on the west side adjacent to the wetland. But with that type of a position, we would have been very close to the wetlands. We would have had to create more asphalt there and just maneuverability within the parking lot. When you go in, do your, get your service and then pull out, you have to really use your mirrors or cream your neck to be able to see oncoming traffic within the parking lot. Parking lots, a lot of folks tend to go fairly fast in parking lots and and they can, you know, be difficult. So site distance is a huge important factor when looking to place parking or anything within a commercial parking site. So we elected to go at this location so that if someone's pulls in and we can actually park three cars in there, we can have one that's left the ATM, one being serviced at the ATM and one queuing outside of the travel aisle of the parking. When someone ends up leaving that, they can look straight down the aisle and don't have to look over their shoulder and they can look straight on to be able to see oncoming traffic. So this location is and the alternatives that we studied was the best for site distance. Other reasons, it's far away from probably the most extensive use, which is the hangar and in the restaurant there. And it's also away from the front of the building where the major drive or accessibility along the front of the businesses are. So it's more isolated, but also close to the branch office of Greenfield Savings Bank. So we chose this location for that fact. The other thing that we tried to do with this, this is a corner where the New Market sign is, there's a a little bit of an island that juts out to protect the sign. Our goal was to pretty much keep our improvements with inside the perimeter curbing of the parking lot, so we would not extend impervious area out beyond where the majority of it was in the existing condition. So with this development, we do lose parking. We lose eight spaces. But we do create more additional impervious area. And so what we'll be doing is taking out that entire bank of parking, putting in new berming, asphalting that, restriping, and then the areas beyond the burn that would be where we would do our grading to tie into natural would be loomed and seeded, similar to what's there now for easy mowing and so forth. The existing lighting pole on the west side of that will stay. The existing trees will stay. We can make this all work within the within the existing parking area. All of the drainage now drains from that north to south along that curb line to existing catch basin down at the south side of this drawing. That will all remain and you'll notice along the west side of the parking area, we have erosion control methods to protect the wetland resources. We're asking for some waivers with our site plan approval because it's very small in nature and it really does not disrupt the overall, you know, maintenance and operation of the site. So our waiver request is Section 11.221, a landscape plan. We didn't feel it was necessary to, you know, provide a brand new landscaping for this. We could show our intention was to replace and mimic essentially the landscaping that's in that area of the site today. We're asking that because we're not doing any lighting changes to the parking area that we wouldn't have to supply a lighting or photometric plan with this in the middle. Sign plans, we don't have any sign plans except which is what is on the preliminary architectural plans for the ATM, which is standard. And those are sheets beyond this, which we can bring up if the Board would like to look at those and if they have any questions regarding those. The existing New Market sign, as I mentioned before, will be removed and it will not be replaced. It's a semi-circular sign that I'm sure everybody's noticed when they've driven through the intersection. A site management plan, if this was a new development or major amendment, we would be supplying a management plan for this. John Dro, well Gleason John Dro Rentals LLC owns this property and they have their own landscape company that maintains this property. They would continue to maintain this property in a manner that they do presently. And then because of the minor use of an ATM, we are asking for a waiver on a traffic study for this. We do lose parking, but I think when you think about it, or at least when I think about it, that vehicles that are going to the bank now have an option that they don't have to park and go into the bank, although a lot of people still like to do that. You find that for the convenience, especially during this past year, people want the accessibility to be able to drive up through their banking and leaving. So that's the reason for installing this this facility here. Not only help the Greenfield Savings Bank customers, but also other residents and people that use the New Market Center. If they need, you know, banking, they'll have the opportunity to do that without parking. And that is my brief presentation of what our intentions are. Jim, I'm not sure if you have anything that you would like to add to that from the as far as the bank's perspective and what the ATM would look like. Pam can scroll down and you can see some cut sheets of what the ATM elevations look like. So that's, it's very standard ATM cut sheets. Do you have anything to add, Jim, to this?
No, I just wanted to say good evening and thank you for entertaining our request. Tony hit it on the head. What we as the bank wanted to do was provide the additional options and services for not only our customers, but the community. Given everything we've been through in the last year. But we wanted to do it in such a way that would have minimal, or at least to minimize any negative impacts on the site. So we secured Tony's services and expertise. And I think he's explained it better than I ever could.
All right, well, thank you, Tony and Jim. And do we have a site visit report? I think it's limited, but I believe it's Janet?
Chris Brester has her hand raised.
Sorry, Chris.
Hello, I'm Chris Brester, Planning Director. So I went on the site visit with Tony Wenceski and we saw the New Market sign that's going to be removed. We saw the area where the new ATM will go and then area where the parking places will be removed. We saw a large tree in the vicinity that is not going to be disturbed. There's going to be a curb line that will be replaced along there, but it looks like it probably won't require much excavation to do that. We saw the light pole that's going to remain and we looked at the way people come in and out of the parking lot and how they would be able to continue to do that and be able to enter the parking lot and exit the parking lot. And this ATM facility won't cause a disruption there. I think that's all I have to say about the site visit. It was, although it was raining and I think I kind of scheduled it at the last minute, so Planning Board members weren't able to go, but I think it's a prominent enough site that most people are familiar with it. And when Jack is ready, I have a statement to make about the use and parking. And also, I wonder if Tony and Jim, one thing we'd like to know, yes, is the image of this ATM, what it's going to look like, what its graphics are. So here you're looking at that and maybe Jim can describe that. And the other thing we'd like to know is what is Jim's last name for the record?
Hey, thank you. My last name is Loyd. It's L-O-Y as in yellow and as in Nancy, D as in David.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And maybe to answer your question, the graphics, as you can see, the left elevation would be, working left to right, would be the image you'd see as you're approaching the ATM area traveling westbound, parallel to Amity Street. What's shown is the front elevation would be the part of the structure that would be facing Amity Street that has the interactive screen, the cast dispensers and whatnot. The right elevation would be seen if you were facing eastbound up Amity Street. So from the intersection, looking up towards the center of town, the rear elevation would be the side facing the parking lot if you were looking at the structure facing northbound. The graphics that you see are the bank's logo and would be consistent with our current bank colors. The area along the top is Lexan and it is illuminated. But it's a soft illumination, as you may see it other banking facilities, other ATM signage. So I can answer any questions that you might have more specific than that. I could try to.
All right, thank you.
Jack, Chris Brester has her hand raised?
Chris?
So if you would permit me, I'd like to make a statement about the use of this ATM. Would this be an appropriate time, Jack?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I already introduced myself. I'm Chris Brester, Planning Director. And we didn't have an opportunity to draft a development application report for this project, but I just wanted to tell you a few things about it. The use of a drive-through facility is permitted under Section 5.043 of the zoning bylaw. It's an accessory use to the principal use of the bank, which is allowed in the BL zoning district and this property is in the BL. Greenfield Savings Bank operates a bank office in the building at 6-22 University Drive. A bank is a retail business and consumer service listed under Section 3.35 of the zoning bylaw. The specific use category is allowed under Section 3.358 Office Uses Bank, which is allowed by Site Plan Review in the zoning district. So in other words, the ATM is an accessory use that's allowed under the use of the bank. The applicant is proposing to remove the New Market Center sign and also to to construct the ATM and there will be a loss of eight parking spaces. And the Building Commissioner provided me with calculations on the parking spaces for the shopping center as a whole. Based on the calculations that he and a member of the Planning Department put together for the Amherst Brewing Company in 2011, there are sufficient parking spaces for the uses on site. The number of parking spaces required for all the uses based on the zoning bylaw, including the hangar, which was formerly the Amherst Brewing Company, is 186 parking spaces. And in order to share parking among uses, one needs to show that there are 120% of the parking spaces required. So 186 parking spaces times 120% or 1.2 is 223.2 parking spaces. So that's the total spaces required if you want to share parking, which this site does. Existing parking spaces on the site are 229. When you lose the eight parking spaces to the ATM, that brings the total down to 221, which is less than the number required, 223.2. However, the Building Commissioner informed me that the hangar is being reconfigured and that the total seats or number of people who will be in the hangar is going to be 50 fewer than is currently allowed. So that's going to bring the parking requirement down. So the conclusion is the number of parking spaces required for the shopping center as a whole will be less than 223.2 with the hangar being reconfigured. So the loss of eight parking spaces will therefore not be a problem and will meet the current requirements of the zoning bylaw. And I believe that Mr. Mara is here as an attendee if people have specific questions about the parking calculations. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Let's see, Andrew, you have your hand up?
Thanks, Jack. Can folks hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Yeah, my question may be more for Chris, actually. When we talk about the lighting plan, we're essentially taking a sign in existing, I think it's non-illuminated sign for the center and replacing it with an illuminated essentially sort of billboards, right? When you consider the graphics on all four edges of this, like I'm just, I'm curious with this being illuminated, whether that would warrant any any additional review from a lighting plan perspective?
Thank you, Andy. Chrissy, you have your hand up still?
I'm just putting my hand up to answer that question if you so I don't think there was any more any more review required other than what the Planning Board is currently doing. I don't think that a photometric plan would help in this particular instance because it's not going to show the illumination of the ground based on this Lexan panel. And there is an existing light there, so you might ask for a photometric plan of the existing light if you thought that was worth looking at.
I'm not overly concerned. Oh, sorry, Jack, can I do mine?
Yeah, proceed.
Sorry, I'm working off my phone here, so it's a little more tedious. Is, yeah, I don't think it's necessarily going to throw a ton of ambient light. It's just the nature of the corner is going to change with a, again, I think non-illuminated sign being replaced with this. again, I think non-illuminated design being replaced with this illuminated box. So I, I think more like just want folks on the Planning Board to be aware of that. As I think many of you know, I kind of do these sort of things all the time. I think like just from my professional perspective, this is a totally reasonable proposal. So, yeah, leave it at that. Thanks.
Thanks, Andy. Doug, please?
Thanks, Jack. Okay, so. Let's see, I guess I was interested in the location of this as a, as a billboard or a sign and wondered whether, in fact, it qualifies as a sign and is subject to some of the Amherst sign bylaws. So maybe Chris could answer that question. That was my first question. My second question had to do whether, with whether there would be any security cameras in the vicinity of this. I could imagine people who are pedestrians deciding to walk up to it and use it, since it's a lot closer than walking to the ATM that may or may not still be in the lobby. And in that sense, I guess I wondered whether there would be, was, was going to be any provision for a path from the public sidewalk to this facility. Third, I wondered whether the ATM in the lobby would stay. And then, fourth, based on the comments that Chris made about the fluctuating parking requirements based on the hangar, I guess my question was, in the event that the hangar decides later to add back those 50 spaces, 50 seats, will it be incumbent on the hangar to find eight more parking spaces? And then, fourth or fifth, I forget. I wondered whether there were any invasive plants in the, in the wetlands or in the buffers, such as burning bushes, that might have established themselves during the, since this project, this area was last reviewed? And whether this might be a good time to remove those? So maybe start with Chris. Is this a sign?
I think it is, I think it is a sign. It's on a structure. So my, my opinion would be that it should take up no more than 10% of the area of the wall on which it exists. And the graphics, I guess that would be up to the building commissioner to determine whether the graphics are a sign or whether they're just graphics. And as I said, Rob is here. So that would be my take on it, but Rob may have a different take.
Okay. Rob, does. We pulled Robin, I don't. I don't see Rob.
He's coming, he's coming.
Okay.
Bear with me.
Oh, there he is, yeah.
He should be coming over to the panelists.
Okay.
Might be easier to see if I stop the screen share.
Hi, Rob Mara, Building Commissioner. I certainly think the, the portion above the kiosk is a sign. I think it is up to the Planning Board to decide whether or not the graphic actually qualifies as a sign, just, you know, in, in similar cases, if the graphic is displaying a message of some sort, commercial type message, we typically would consider that part of the signage. And another question that was asked about the parking, the, the parking is mostly regulated on the site by a special permit of Amherst Brewing Company, now taken over by Hangar Restaurant. And I am in process of amending that special permit with an Article 14 decision that reduces the occupant load of that establishment from 450 to 388, which is where we're going to get the reduction in required parking spaces. I don't have those numbers worked out yet, but there will be a reduction in parking as a result of that in a document under the Article 14 decision. So in the future, it would require a special permit to put those 50 or 62 seats back in the establishment if they choose to do so.
Thank you, Rob.
All right, then I guess, you know, I guess I'll just say, I think from a business point of view, I don't think the bank could have picked a more prominent location to put their kiosk with the, with the logo and the sign at the top of it. So I guess that's, you know, that's of concern, I guess I'd say. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. So you're, Doug, you're, you're thinking that. I'm trying to get your, your last take there. If you want to reiterate, I mean, are you, are you okay?
Well, I guess, I guess we're taking a pretty low-key sign that identified the, the location and, and told everybody the name of the, of the little shopping center. We're no longer going to have that, so, you know, nobody will know what that shopping center is called. And in lieu, we're getting a, you know, we're getting a, of the, the logo, you know, that's presumably well-known of a local business that's pretty prominently displayed at a pretty high, pretty highly trafficked intersection.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members?
Janet McGowan has her hand raised.
Yeah.
Thank you. I, I'm struggling to read this map and understand where things are. I wonder if Pam, you could put it back up? I'm, I'm pretty familiar with this, the shopping center. I couldn't see from my, my at-home map or on the screen where the wetlands were with, that were being discussed. I didn't really understand where the entryway is off of Amity Street. And then I, even from the tiny, the tiny green map, I couldn't even figure out where Greenfield Savings Bank was, which I think is adjacent, the first thing you run into, but just my memory. And I'm sorry, I wasn't able to make this, the site visit, because I thought I wasn't insured that it was a go, and so I had another appointment scheduled.
It might be helpful to look at the photographs. If you've been to the property and you're familiar, I mean, we can try to blow that up, but just in front of this, there's photographs of where the, the sign is and where the ATM would be replacing. So that's looking north, parallel to, and that's looking down Amity. So they went pretty quick there, but.
Sorry.
Yeah, so there's, yeah, no, that's fine. So this is standing on more towards the eastly side. And that van is right at the intersection, parked on Amity, getting ready to either go straight left or right on University. That's where that sign is. It's right at the northwest corner of the parking area. The wetlands are just on the other side of that. And they run parallel between the parking, the edge of parking and the improvements on University Drive. So if you, if you go ahead down, there's another picture looking, same position, just a little farther to the right. So you can see the tree that's going to stay. You can see the berm, which is, you know, in the pavement is, it's been, you know, it's somewhat stressed over time. That will get repaved in that little area there where the parking bays are, and that berm will get replaced. It's hard to.
The wetland, I'm sorry, the wetlands are behind or along that line with the trees.
Yes, so, yes, right there. So those tall shrubs in that, that's the wetland area. And it's been flagged. And I went back and I looked, because I didn't send the wetland report in with my planning board, because we were, I typically just put that for the conservation submittal. But I went back to look at the site description from our wetland scientist. And he doesn't mention invasives. What he does say, there's a linear wetland that is a mixture of emergent marsh and shrub swamp wetland types. Dominant plant species include silky dogwood, sensitive fern and cat tail. And he says that the wetland receives a great deal of stormwater from the adjacent parking area. Everything drains to that area. So I can't state whether there is invasives in there, but he was more or less describing what the, the primary wetland plants are within that wetland area drainage area between the parking area and university.
Okay, thank you. And so I guess my other question, the next one, is looking at the, the site plan map.
Yeah.
I can see where Amity Street is. I don't quite see the entryway off of Amity Street.
Yeah, it's farther to the east. So we'd have to go and try to blow up into that colored photograph on the right side. If you go down, Pam, all the way to that plan of ours.
The site plan?
Yes. So, so, so the, so Amity's to the, to the top of the page. University is running from bottom to top on the left side of the page. So that entry off of Amity is quite a ways over to the right. It's in front of the building. That's actually a different, different building, different ownership. So if you can go down in the right-hand corner, we can see if we can blow that up enough. I can, you can probably see that.
Yeah.
Lower right-hand side. Yes, right in that area.
Yeah, this was really difficult to see, and I have a paper map.
So you can, you can see the whole center there. You can see us where we identify where our work is. The property is heavy where it says Amity Street. The entrance in is way over to the right there, in between Amity and street. So you come in, in front of that building, which is a different ownership. There's multiple access easements through this property between these different ownerships. I can't speak to that in detail, because I didn't study that. I was focused mostly on the ATM area, which is to the top left. There is a business sign, multiple signs identifying businesses on the main entrance coming in off of University, which is the southwest corner of the site. I hope that helps. I'm sorry, I don't have any.
But none of that is changing, correct?
None of that is changing. The only stuff that's changing is up in that little area, which you can see that we identify as site. And you've got a little polygon line of the area that we're working in. So that's the focus. And then we detail it up on the upper left with the actual survey shots that we took and created a base plan of, of the actual area where the work is going to be done.
Um, well, Mr., one more, could we go back and look at the green map? And can you just show me where your bank is? And that has an ATM that you can access after hours. Is that correct? Could you just circle around where the, your bank is?
It's, I don't know if you could do that, Pam. It's on the north, north corner of that, of the buildings. Have to slide over a little bit, I think. Yeah, so it's in the northern part of that northern building.
In here?
Up a little higher, up, 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 down. That's a separate ownership. Keep coming down, come straight down, straight down. Go a little bit left, little bit left, over to that building, right in there, right up in front of that. So a little higher, little up, right in that area. That's the, that's the branch office right there.
And so do, do people have access to that ATM 24 hours a day?
I'll have to let Jim speak to that.
Okay.
There is magnetic card access to the vestibule and access to that ATM.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the, the board? I see none. Oh, Maria.
No, thanks, Jack. So I was listening to Doug's comments and I went to Google Maps to, to sort of take a look at that intersection and see what vegetation was there. I don't know how old this photograph is, but you were saying the vegetation is staying and the current New Market Center sign looks like maybe it's seven feet tall. I'm just guessing. And then it looks like the parking lot actually is a bit lower. The asphalt is lower than that sort of berm. So I'm just wondering, and I looked at the drawings. It looks like the, the ATM is maybe 11 feet tall. It's hard to say. It's like 8'6" plus another 20 inches. So I just wonder how visible that lit signage part is above the vegetation. I mean, because that's a good point Doug was bringing, is just, you know, it's literally a new sign at that intersection. I don't know how important that New Market Center sign really is. I, you know, I, I think if you live here, you would know what, you know, how to find it. I'm not sure people who don't know where it is would look for that sign, really. But it is a good point, that it's just, it's a very prominent intersection and it's basically the sign right at the street corner. So I just wonder if the height of it should be described as far as, like, on Google Maps, I can see New Market Center sign very clearly. But again, it looks like the paving is down. And I can't tell from your survey what the, I can see a few contours, but there's no like elevation points of the sidewalk and Amity Street versus the parking lot. So it's hard to say how visible it will be really from the public way. So I guess I share a little bit of concern about, yeah, it's like basically a big new sign right there. I don't know if there's anything in the documentation that I missed that could tell us about, you know, how high the top of the, the kiosk would be, that, that sort of horizontal band.
Yeah, we can go back to the, to the cut sheets on that. But if you see, if you're looking at this plan right here, you can see the existing sign. There's a, there's a, there's a notation that said existing sign to be removed. And it's, it goes right through, the front part of the sign goes through that first car and goes back. And you can see the note that says existing sign to be removed. That's the existing New Market sign. So we're going to be, I don't have a scale in front of me. I'd have to go walk away to get it. But we're about, I don't know, 10 to 15 feet to the east of that. I've got to figure we're probably 30 feet off the right of way to Amity. So we're more towards the, the southerly side of that sign, if you were to line it up. And we're quite a ways off of the sidewalk from University, because you've got the wetland in between the parking and the university improvements. So I don't know if that helps from kind of a distancing thing. There are elevations on this plan. Every one of those boxes talk about what the pavement is. And, and the berm is a six-inch asphalt slip form berm. That'll be there, because we want to control drainage to run it down to that catch basin. And then behind it, that whole area there is lawn. And, and so we're going to replace that lawn in that area. That big tree that you saw in the photograph, which is shown on the plan, will remain also. So we're just doing some fill-ins where we're taking out pavement and also doing the tie-in, so that the grades match appropriately there once we're done and finished. But I don't know if that helps. We can go down, if you scroll down, Pam, to the, to the architectural plans. Then there's a, there's, should give you a height on that. So right there to the top of the canopy, we've got from the ground, eight feet, six and three eighths inches. So there'll be a curb around the, the island for that. So you go up from the curb, eight feet, six and three eighths inches. And then the band strip, their lighted lexicon, is a 20-inch tall strip around the ATM. The ATM length is 10 feet, 10 inches. And that's to the upper part, where you're talking about the, the canopy signage, 10 feet, 10 inches. And while the width isn't all that much, I don't, I don't see a dimension there for that. But hopefully that helps.
Thank you. Maria, is that a good for you?
Yeah, I just, does anyone know how tall the current New Market Center sign is? It is, there probably isn't data on that. I mean, just looking at the photos, it looks like it's slightly shorter than what your ATM would be, so.
I would say I don't, I didn't measure the height of that sign. It's pretty good. I would say I don't, I didn't measure the height of that sign. It's pretty good size. But I, I got a feeling that this, this ATM is taller than that, just by inspection. You know, being out on the site and looking at, you know, the pictures that I supplied, I think this will be, it will be taller than that. But it is, it is slightly east of where that sign is. It's going to be 10 to 15 feet east of that. It won't be right where that sign is, because we have to be, remember, we're trying to bring cars in, get them serviced, and then get a car out so that it can look in both directions of the drive aisle, so it's safe entry into the parking lot.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Doug, please.
Thanks, Jack. I guess I had another thought, which was I wondered whether you would have the capacity to create a, some sort of three dimensional rendering of just showing the massing of this, and so that we could see how visible it is from the street and you know, I, this, this, you know, it seems like on the one hand, this is just a small ATM, and you're a great local business. And on the other hand, I could imagine people really reacting strongly to seeing this all of a sudden and, you know, kind of thinking we made a big mistake. So I guess I'm, I'm interested in whether we, we could get some more visualization of just what the impact of this would be. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Good comments. Pam?
Yes?
Oh, you had your hand up, okay. Or so, sorry, is this narrow? So any other board? Oh, okay, we have Johanna and Janet.
This is a quick question, but I took Maria's suggestion and looked at street view on Google Maps. And I see these big bushy, big bushes on the intersection of university and Amity, and I don't see those on your schematic. And I was wondering if they stay, because those strike me as pretty significant visual barriers.
Yes, we're not, we won't be over there doing any work. This is confined right to the parking area and just outside the parking area. So no, over by the intersection and where there are large shrubs and that, we will not be there. We don't affect the wetland shrubbery at all either. I mean, we're, we're, we're required to stay away from the, the wetland, so. Yeah, we're, I guess if you were out there from the curb to the light pole that's there, which you can see in the pictures that I provided, that extent up to the north, a little bit, and then we bring it right back to where the tree is. And then the other landscaping is actually where there's pavement now. We're going to be removing that and actually creating an island there. So you know, all of that stuff stays, that, that won't, that light pole stays. Our, our actual improvements will be inside of that. We actually circle through there and don't push out. So actually, I think where that, where the backside of that sign is, that's just going to be lawn there. The tall shrubs, we do not get into the tall shrubs there. So that's right at the limits of where our work is.
Okay. And those shrubs are probably seven, between five and seven feet tall would be my estimate from this. So like they don't fully block, they wouldn't fully block the ATM from the road, but they would offer some screening. Okay, thank you.
No, yeah, they're probably on the order of four to five. I would, you know, I, I just being out there, I would think something like that.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Janet?
Hi, I think we can only, I don't know, like Johanna, I wish I could see what you're talking about, but I think we need to, we all need to sort of, I, I feel like we're all lacking sort of information, enough information to kind of make a decision. And so one thought I had was just putting, you know, continuing in the sort of taking it up at a different hearing when we could do a site visit, get a development report, I found it really hard to follow, like all the numbers and stuff. And then also the idea of a 3D massing, so we can think about the sign and the implications of it. I have a question about whether other business owners in the New Market Center buildings knew, know about this and what their reaction was. And I know that's, I think there's, you know, legal notice to the abutters within 300 feet, but that's the property owners, not necessarily businesses there. And so I was wondering, have, have the other business owners seen this? And do they have a reaction to it?
Tony?
I'm going to let Jim talk to that. I'm more of the site plan guy. I don't, I know he's, Jim's had conversations with the owner of the site and that.
Yeah, my conversations have been exclusively with Gleason Gendrow. I haven't communicated at all with any of the neighboring tenants, other businesses.
Okay, so, um, I don't have a, so I, I feel like I could use more information and a look myself or, and a development report. But I think what I, I think what, maybe what Doug Marshall is talking about, and Maria is, is sort of like, I think by putting lit signs on that corner, it might start feeling a little strip mallish. And kind of the vibe on University Drive and Amity Street is, you know, mostly the, you know, it's, has trees, it has grass. There are stores, but they're set back. And so maybe by putting an ATM right there, it just, it, it sort of looks a little bit strip mallish, or I would say sort of Long Island, as much as I love my home, home island. So I wonder if that's kind of the concern. It's like changing the way the New Market Center looks or the whole corner looks. And so I don't feel able to sort of make a decision on that based on what we have here. And I wonder what other people's thoughts were.
Thank you, Janet. Chrissy, have your hand up.
Yeah, I had two things to say. I wondered if the applicant could bring us photographs of one of these ATMs installed somewhere and maybe take photographs at night to show what the effect of the light is. And I also wondered if if it would be possible to tone down the white of the sign at the top. In other words, instead of having it white brightly lit with green lettering, have it, you know, sort of a grayish color that wouldn't be maybe grayish and maybe not as transparent, so that it wouldn't really be so shiny and, and stark on that corner and would tend to blend in a little more. So those are just two suggestions.
Thank you, Chris.
Maybe I can speak to that a little bit. We don't have a, a structure that's identical to this. What we do have is in Greenfield, we have a walk-up ATM that is adjacent to a restaurant. That wouldn't be exact, but I could provide photos of that and what that looks. This would be not exact, but similar to that in terms of the visual presentation and feel. As far as changing the white lighting, I would have to discuss that with the manufacturer. But my belief is that will be illuminated with LED. And what I know about LED lighting is they generally have options to change the intensity as well as the, the shade of the lighting. And I could certainly look into that to see if that is in fact an option with this particular setup.
Thank you, Jim. Regarding the board, I don't see any other hands raised, so perhaps we can go out to the, you know, public. Is there any public comment on this? Dorothy? Dorothy, Pam, say your name and address.
229 Amity Street, and I'm very familiar with this little shopping center. The corner where the ATM is planned, usually there's nothing there. Now, I only go there in the daytime, but there was always a lot of empty parking spaces in that vicinity. So from the daytime anyway, I don't see it getting in the way, and I don't see that there'd be a parking problem. I have always found the placement of the sign kind of eccentric. It doesn't really, it's kind of, it's not, it's weirdly placed to tell you where you are. So I don't see it's moving as a problem. I do think it's good to have signs somewhere letting people know the name of the shopping plaza, because sometimes things are identified that way. I did see what looked like a street light behind the sign in the picture. And so my thought was, I was kind of hoping that there were some street lights at that corner just to make it safer for if there were pedestrians using it at night. But it's a very quiet little corner of the parking lot, and I, I, you know, I don't, I really, you guys know so much more than I do about the electric sign and how big and how tall and what it would do. But it doesn't seem to me that it would cause much problem. Because it's kind of like, I think it's kind of the, it's lower, the land is lower there than the surrounding land. That's it.
Thank you, Pam. Dorothy? Who else do we have? Janet Keller. Say your name and address.
Sure. Janet Keller, 120 Poopah Hill Road. I really appreciated the discussion about the detailing of that corner and the the shrubbery adjacent to the, the wetland and the whole idea of fitting it in. Appreciate that very much. And wonder if it's possible to add to the shrubbery rather than lawn to add a little bit more of ecological and, and to the good looks of, of that corner. And finally, on the tree and the berm, you know, trees, basically what they do is they eat sunlight and they drink mud. So I wondered if you could ensure that it has a good soil base around it and under the asphalt for its roots to do that job. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Janet. And other hands, I don't see. So any response from the development team there, Tony or Jim?
The first speaker, she's totally correct. There is a light post, a street standard or parking light fixture right there at the corner, which will remain. We're going to keep that there. And that provides the lighting for that corner of the parking lot. As I said, this ATM is going to be shifted, or its position's going to be 10 to 15 feet farther to the east of where the existing New Market sign is. So you know, so she's correct in that, and that would stay. As far as the berm and the tree, as you saw in the photograph, all we're going to be doing is replacing the berm that's there and putting in new pavement. So there won't be a lot of excavation. And so that tree will have the same soils that it's had and, and will experience the, essentially the same condition that it has historically. Adding additional shrubbery between the trees and maybe in that island, that's something I'd have to talk to Jim. And here, and we'd have to get back to the owner, obviously, adding shrubbery to areas where they mow lawn and that. It's just something that would affect them, and we'd need to talk to them about that. I don't see it as a problem or anything. It's just more of an operational maintenance problem that we'd want to get approval from them before we added it to the scope of the project.
Thank you. Doug?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to make a motion that we continue this hearing to at least give us a chance to either have another site visit or each get out there individually, so that we can look at it a little more carefully.
Very good. Anyone want to second that?
You should continue it to a date certain.
Second to a date certain.
Okay, we're, we're pretty filled up. I know our schedule, so.
Yeah, I don't know our calendar, so I wouldn't know what date to put in.
Yeah.
May I make a suggestion?
Absolutely, yeah.
August 4th would probably work.
Okay.
Chris, do you know what time?
I would say seven o'clock on August 4th.
Do we have anything else scheduled for that day?
Yes, you have the Sweet Alice Trail Parking Area Plan, which is a town project. It's relatively small.
Okay.
So if that get came at 6:35 and you had this at seven, that would probably work.
Okay. Um. Just making a note. So is that good with is that good with the board? And with the development team? August 4th?
You should take a vote.
Yeah, okay. So, well, number one, Tony and Jim, is that okay? Can you make that date?
I, I can make that date.
I should be able to. I'll have a representative from my office.
Okay. And we can go through, Andrew?
Just is it whether we can make the August 4th date?
Correct.
Continuing the public hearing.
Oh, yeah. I'm, I'm fine with continuing. I'm not sure if I can make August 4th at this point. I'll be out of town.
All right. Maria?
Yes, I won't be around, but I'll try to send comments beforehand for the August 4th.
Okay, Doug?
Hi.
And Tom? Oh, we don't have Tom. Janet?
Hi.
And Johanna?
No. I don't think we should postpone it. I have, I feel like I have enough information to make a decision.
Yeah, excellent. I'm looking at my calendar. So we're looking at August 4th. Yeah, I will be around. So, um.
So Jack, are you a yes to the motion?
Well, yeah, I am, I'm available August 4th, yes. So. And Chris?
So that's only three people that you have who are definitely going to be able to come that night, who are also in favor of continuing the public hearing. So I could offer another date. I could offer August 18th as a possibility, if that makes a difference for people. I know it would be not for Johanna, but it would possibly make a difference for others. So that's it.
Maybe, sorry, I didn't, I thought the question was how are we voting, not are we available on August 4th? I may be able to make it on August 4th, but my, I, yeah, I don't think we should continue. I think we should resolve it tonight. So that, just to clarify my vote, in case that affects things down the road.
Maybe you should have two votes, Jack.
Okay. So does anyone want to make a motion to approve this with some conditions?
I would be prepared to move that.
Okay.
If I get support. But yeah, I mean, I think I guess the motion is to approve this proposal with the following conditions. There is serious attention paid to the sightlines and work put in place to eco, like try to ecologically improve the area as much as possible. So take care of the existing trees that are there, make sure that they Like try to ecologically improve the area as much as possible. So take care of the existing trees that are there, make sure that they stay healthy through construction. Plant additional vegetation. And then, you know. Really take into consideration the feedback of the board that they don't want prominent advertising on this corner for a private business and. To, you know, consider scaling back the design. I, I don't know if that's clear enough, but those would be my, the constraints based that, that I'm hearing based on our discussion tonight.
Okay, Doug?
I guess that, I mean, I, I appreciate Johanna wanting to. Move this along, but I feel like that kind of. Description leaves a lot of wiggle room for how it really turns out.
Okay, yeah, I, I would, I have to say that I. Be obliged to, to get a little more information. Not many of us are, none of us made the site visit. On this project, so. The question is, do we continue to the 4th? What was the, the alternative date, Chris?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
So I, I will, I'll withdraw my vote, my motion.
Okay. I'm looking at the eighteenth. Yeah, okay. I can do the eighteenth, so. Going back to the development team, Tony, Jim. Can you do the 4th or 18th in terms of providing a bit additional information as requested?
I'll be out of town on the 18th, I'm good for the 4th.
Okay.
If I can't, I can make the 4th, if I can't make the 18th, a representative from the bank will be here. In my place.
Okay, it sounds like we can do the 4th then.
How about if we go back over the people who are available on the 4th?
Okay.
Andrew is out of town, Maria is out of town, Doug is here, we don't know about Tom. Janet is here. Johanna could be here. And Jack could be here, so one, two, three, four. So you have four people who are available to be here and we don't know about Tom, so that would work, you'd have a. Quorum and you'd be able to vote on the site plan review application.
Okay. So, I guess. Can move, you know, to. Continue the hearing till, to the 4th and we have a second on that. Oh, Doug?
Yeah, I guess I wanted to ask one other thing, which was whether. Somebody from the, from the property owner would have, would be able to perhaps attend. When I look at the Google site view, I'm seeing a lot of shrubs that look like. Burning bushes, just about to turn in the fall. And if we wanted to talk about the landscaping. You know, I assume that that would be the property owner rather than the, the, the bank.
Go near Jim?
I can certainly reach out to the property owners and request their attendance.
Okay. So do we have a second on the continuation to August 4th?
Second.
Who made the initial?
I did.
Jack did?
I did.
Seven o'clock. Seven o'clock on August 4th, okay.
Sounds good, so. We can do a little vote here. Maria?
Yes.
And Andrew?
I.
Doug?
Hi.
And Janet?
Hi.
Myself, I, Johanna?
Hi.
Okay. All right, so that's, we'll take this up again on August 4th.
Great.
Thank you, Jim.
Can you let me know when the site visit is? I'll try to have some. Site markings out there so that it would be very helpful for the board when they go out to view. Just marking where maybe the ATM is and maybe the curb, so that would be helpful for the board to actually see it on the site.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
All right, take care.
On the 4th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so.
Mr. Marshall has his hand raised.
Yes, I saw that, Doug.
Yeah, I just was gonna say before they left that it might be useful to have a pole that's 11 feet high. So that we could stick on the pavement and see how high the sign is. Maybe have, if somebody could pass that word to them.
Chris, would you mind?
I'll do that.
All right, thank you. All right, next item is the zoning amendment.
Saying, yeah, I was, I was gonna say, as I was going from one spot back to my house, I drove right past. The center and went in, I think Maria, you're right, it's that the existence sign is almost exactly 11 feet would be my guess. There, and the vegetation is very significant around there, you can't even see into the parking lot from. Amity on the west, from University on the south. Even approaching from Amity down the hill, it's, it's, it's pretty obstructed the way it's set up. We'll see it all on the site visit, but it's, it's not as bad as I expected, as I took a closer look. Thanks.
Thank you. Alrighty, so. Looking at the packet here. So next item is the zoning bylaw. Official zoning map for, map for, for 10A parcel 33 rezoning north of Prospect Street. To see if the town will vote to amend the official zoning map to extend. The general business district to include a vacant parcel of land owned. By the town of Amherst in the vicinity of North Pleasant Street. North Prospect Street and Cow's Lane and Amity Street currently located in the general residence district, RG. And Chris, how do you want to proceed with this?
We have with us the proponent or the. One of the proponents, George Ryan, Town Counselor. And Dorothy Pam was also a proponent initially, but I believe she's. Dropped out of the group that's proposing this amendment, so I think Mr. Ryan has a. Has a presentation.
Right, I appreciate it, thank you, George.
Thank you, Ken. This is something that Evan Ross and I have put together and Evan would very much like to be here. Unfortunately, this was scheduled after he had made his vacation plans. And so he can't be here tonight, so you're getting the B team. I'll do my best. You have a memo, I believe, in the packet that hopefully you have a chance to read or have access to. Pretty much spells out the, the rationale behind this proposal. Basically, we want to rezone parcel 14A 33 from the RG to BG. It's currently used, as you know, as a municipal parking lot and the larger rationale behind this. Is to open the opportunity for the development of a new parking structure on that lot potentially. This kind, this rezoning that we're proposing will not mean the lot will become a parking structure, but. It creates the opportunity for such use should the town decide to pursue that, that option. This site has long been looked at and considered for a parking garage over the years. Most recently, it was identified by the bid as one of the four capital improvements that they were proposing as part of their. Destination Amherst, two of those Kendrick Park Playground and the. Improvements in North Common are already either near completion or about to begin, and this was one of them. The centralized location is, I think, ideal for visitors coming to the downtown. There's long been a perception of a parking problem in Amherst from those on the outside as well as those on the inside, and this is something that I think. Would address that, it has strong support amongst the business community. It would be, I, I think, a very strong statement in terms of economic development coming out of COVID. Also, it has the potential of being used by people who work downtown, since many of them currently have to pay for parking. Even though there, it comes out of their salary, basically they're paying. So in the memo, it spells out the, the rationale, I'm not going to go through all that. We certainly can talk about it if you wish. Essentially, what we're looking at or hoping for is a public-private partnership. But for this to happen, the first step is to rezone this parcel. And why BG? Well, as, as explained in the memo. The current zoning, of course, would not allow any such thing, it's currently zoned as RG. And so BG would be, I think, the best solution in terms of providing maximum lot coverage. And making a parking garage a feasible economic possibility. Really, that's, that's really at the moment all I have to say, I think at this point, it's really something for you to, to. Ask your questions and to think about the, the possibility of this in terms of, of the, the larger picture of Amherst. We have renovated and expanded Jones Library that's going to be right there. We have a world-class independent cinema, we have a music space, a venue that's being considered for the downtown. We're going to have more development into downtown over the coming years, so it seems like this sort of. Development would be good, but for this to happen or even to possible for it to happen, a rezoning would be necessary.
Thank you. Thank you, George, so. Janet, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. I have question, I have a million questions, but I think the most, the preliminary question to ask is. When was this zoning amendment submitted by Town Council to the planning board? We've had previous zoning amendments submitted to Town Council with a cover letter from. The Town Council Chair Lynn Grismer and we never received that. And. So the reason I'm asking that is because once we, once. The zoning amendment is submitted from the Town Council to the planning board, that starts a 60-day, 65-day clock. In which we have to hold a public hearing. And under the processes that we've had traditionally and also outlined in the May 6, 2020 flowchart. After submittal, after the town, the Town Council submits to us, we start our planning board review process. Which can include ZBA and zoning subcommittee review. It is likely to be minimal if the proposal originated from the planning board, so. Here we are without a formal submittal from the Town Council, I don't know what date started the clock for. For a public hearing that we're required to hold within 65 days. And I don't know why we're holding a public hearing before actually talking about this, but I just, I just want to get the timing down because I feel. Incredibly pressed that we're sitting here in a, what is usually almost a final step. Before it goes back to Town Council before. And I don't know when we got it from Town Council. And so when I look at the statute, it's, I mean, 40, chapter 40A, section 5. It says, said public hearing shall be held within 65 days. After the proposed zoning ordinance or bylaw is submitted to the planning board by the city council, and I don't know when that day was.
Okay, Chris?
I believe the day was the date that they referred it to the planning board, they referred it on May 24th. And the 65 days after May 24th would be July 28th. So you're required to hold a public hearing within that time period, or at least start, open a public hearing, so we've. Set the public hearing date for tonight, and if you don't feel comfortable in voting to support this. Zoning amendment, you can certainly vote it down, or you can continue your public hearing to another date. But essentially, you had 65 days in which to hold a public hearing, and the CRC is holding its public hearing on. July 13th, which is next Tuesday, and I believe theirs is going to be held during the day. So you'll have another chance to talk about it with them. But that's my understanding, and I don't think there was anything wrong about the way this process occurred, it was a, something that came from. The Town Council to the planning board, and so there wasn't. It wasn't initiated by the planning department, it wasn't initiated by the planning board, so it's really, you know, got its own path. And I think I've been telling the planning board about this periodically when I've had an opportunity to. Give a staff report. And so I think you've all known about it for a while, and it was probably fairly. Early in the process that Janet reached out to me and asked me to forward. The exact wording that was given to the Town Council to the planning board members, and I did that, I can probably. Figure out what date that was. So I, I consider it to be submitted to the planning board for a public hearing by the Town Council, and if you. So I'm just gonna stop there.
So, Chris, if we continue the hearing, can we continue the hearing beyond July 28th?
I don't know, I think so, but I'm not sure, I think it's a question of opening a public hearing.
Okay.
That's usually what it is.
Yeah, okay, so I, I think in, in. In, in, in thinking, well, I'm not gonna speak for you, Janet, but I feel like, you know, the hearing can. Doesn't have to conclude today, and then we can wait more information and deliberate. But Janet?
Oh, I don't, so I did not know when the Town Council voted on this, I heard about it. About a month later from people talking about it, and I sent you an email. And I asked you to send a copy to me, because I just had heard about it, and I think you emailed that to me and the planning board on June 22nd. So I could almost say, I mean, I still don't think the Town Council has submitted that to the planning board, and it sounds like a technicality. But in a situation like this, we're rushing along. We're holding a public hearing after not having our normal back and forth in discussions about something. This is a really big weighty issue. I know parking garages and things like that have a long history in this town, I have, I'm very agnostic on parking garages, I'm willing to hear anything. But I think there's a lot of, a lot to go through, and if we have a ticking clock overhead. Of the end of the month and we have, you know, we've added planning board meetings this month. I don't know, you know, it's just, it, I don't get it, and I swear, I don't think it's. If, I think a Town Council vote is not a submittal to the planning board, and I think that's not the way that, it, it looks like an omission by the. Town Council and the chair. Maybe the clock started on June 22nd after I asked, but then that's, we still have 65 days from that date, so I would. I think it'd be healthier and to stick to the process that we usually do. I think it would be better for the town if we actually talk about this at some length and then go to a public hearing. With the public, you know, having heard our deliberations, having seen that. Us being comfortable with it to basically say yea or nay. And I don't, you know, it seems like we could have a public hearing in sometime in late August. After taking some time to review it, we just spent an hour and 15 minutes talking about a kiosk. You know that we're gonna take a long time talking about this. I just wonder what other people do, you know, I just, I think this is.
Maria has her hand up, so.
I just think it's a legal issue about when, when it was submitted.
All right, Maria, please?
Yeah, I, I'm confused about where, I think, well, okay, so. I think it was Janet who sent to the whole planning board. So I think it was Janet who sent to the whole planning board a series of files. And one of them was useful, the meeting minutes from June third, twenty twenty. It seems like they did exactly what the process, this flowchart, that was May, the May sixth, the revised one. It seems like they did exactly what that flowchart said. The, the minutes saying, the Hannah Key pointed out, the two boxes at the top are new additions are intended to address proposals coming directly from the planning, from the board. Sorry, I mean, are intended to address proposal coming directly from the board or planning staff. All other proposals would begin the process in box three, which is exactly what happened. Town council receives proposed zoning bylaw amendment. And then from that box three down, here we are, we're at the public hearing. So I guess I don't, I mean, it's a public hearing. This is where we deliberate. Am I incorrect on that? Isn't this where we sort of think through the pros and cons? I mean, it's not like we skipped the step because those first two boxes are if the amendment was initiated by, you know, planning staff. What does it say?
Yeah.
What are you looking at, Maria?
Those files you sent us, Janet, the May sixth revised flowchart, and then the meeting minutes you sent that were from June third, twenty twenty. Those two files you sent, I think there, it was just this morning, maybe. But the, the minutes literally call out, and I thought it even says here, Mr. Marshall suggested an arrow from the side pointing to box three could aid in defining this is where the process begins for a community petition or a counselor proposal. So it's literally, that's where we are now. We're in the stage after town council has proposed a zoning bylaw amendment. And then the next step is this, what we're doing right now, the public hearing. So I feel like I don't quite understand why it seems like we're not going through the process correctly and that we're not going to be deliberating it. Isn't that what we're doing today? And then moving forward, there's like a bunch more arrows moving down that we are doing. And I guess maybe I will ask Chris, today, I don't know if someone can pull up the May sixth chart that Janet sent. But today is just the beginning of box four in the flowchart, correct? We still have like seven arrows ahead of us. It looks like one, two, three, four, five. Or Pam, do you have that file that Janet sent today to everybody?
I'm trying to get to it.
I don't think it was in our package. I think Janet just sent it to all of us.
Is it this one?
Yeah, yeah, except that that one doesn't have the first three boxes. There you go. So the third blue box is where this originated. And then now we're at the fourth blue box, which is the public hearing, which we had to hold within the, what you were saying, Janet, the sixty-five days. So aren't we then, and then further down, there's like a whole slew of steps that. Maybe I'm incorrect. Is there a timeframe on those? Is that why you're feeling like we're pinched on time? Because where it says, planning board review process, isn't that where we are now, or did we skip all that? Maybe, Chris, if you can just tell us, because I know this is all new. We just adopted this and this is our first really official one, maybe.
Seems like we're in line, but Chris?
So Mandy Jo says that the dotted boxes are optional. And it's the solid boxes that show us what the legal requirements are. So we're actually in this box on the left here that says, planning board, public hearings, and we've submitted the first notice and the second notice. And we're in the public hearing, but it's not a joint public hearing with the CRC because they've chosen to hold their public hearings separately for this, for this particular item. And I must say, this is the way things occur in Northampton, so there's nothing wrong with it with regard to state law. Northampton Planning Board doesn't really get too much involved in development of zoning amendments. They receive zoning amendments from their version of CRC and town and the city council there. And then they hold a public hearing and determine whether they're going to support and recommend approval or adoption of a zoning amendment or not. But they're most often not involved in the development of zoning amendments. So that's not a requirement of state law.
Good. So, Chris, what's the next step here then? For us, you know, we're.
I would suggest that you deliberate, that you have some discussion about whether you think this is a good idea or not. And if people feel comfortable voting to recommend this to town council tonight, then you would take a vote. If people don't feel comfortable and they feel like they need more information or more discussion or whatever, then you continue this public hearing to a date certain in the future.
Okay, yeah, so if I can. Yeah, I mean, I, I'll let, let Andrew speak and then, and Janet.
My, mine is just real quick. I think, isn't the issue more just around what is the date that starts a sixty-five day period? That we're following the boxes. It's just, we're not sure when the, the clock started ticking. I think Janet's right. Like, we, we generally have a lot of deliberation amongst ourselves before we would, before we go for public comment. So. I mean, if, if we feel like we've got the firm date, I think we've got a document that explains when we need to do this. I think being able to continue is also a useful mechanism to, to ensure that we don't feel like we're rushing this.
Good, Janet?
So I would like to talk about this tonight and start the, the dotted box, the planning board review process. Because it will, it will be helpful to us and it'll make a better zoning amendment or a better report and our better understanding. And I think it will help the public participate more effectively. So I'd like to make a motion to cancel this public hearing to discuss the zoning amendment tonight. And also to, to, to clarify legally what date town council submitted the zoning amendment to the planning board, starting the date for our public hearing requirement.
Jack, I would think that the next step, according to what Janet just said, would be to ask for a second. And therefore, I'd like to hold my comments until that process is complete.
Okay, I, I wasn't sure what, where you were. So is there a second to Janet's motion? Andrew?
One second.
Okay. And for the discussion amongst the board. Doug?
I would like to ask a couple of questions about the proposal, or should I hold that until we've decided whether to approve this?
I think it would be helpful for us to flesh this out further before we vote.
All right, well, and I guess I'll ask a couple of questions, probably mostly to George, because you're the proponent. First of all, I'd like to know what the current revenue of the lot is. And whether, I, I see that in Evan's narrative, you know, he's, he's envisioning a process whereby the land is provided by the town and the garage is built by a developer. You know, I assume the town would lose the revenue from the lot that's, that it's now getting if it just leases the land to the developer. So I was curious how much revenue that lot is producing. My second question is that right now, to exit the CVI, to exit this parcel, you have to cross onto land that is, I believe owned by the owner of actually CVS. So that the curb cut that goes out on the North Prospect Street is not coming from this parcel. And I've heard second, third, or fourth hand that there was a long lawsuit between the two, between a couple of the owners of these parcels back here about the easement rights to, to get out to North Prospect Street. So I guess I wondered if you could clarify the legal right of exit from the town-owned lot to North, North Prospect and whether a new curb cut would be required.
Thanks, Doug. George?
I can't answer this question tonight. I think that our approach was that there, this is the first step of a long process. And there are a whole host of issues that would eventually need to be resolved. And we have no idea whether they can be resolved. But trying to resolve them now, I, I certainly can get the revenue addressed. That's easy. I don't know what I can do, but the second, and I'm not sure, and I'm sure you guys will discuss it, whether that's at this stage, something that, that needs to be resolved for kind of the larger issue, whether you feel that this kind of rezoning makes sense broadly speaking, and whether a parking garage would be appropriate here. And it may, in fact, never come about, but it can't come about under any scenario without this basic zoning change. I think the question that, that, that I'm trying to raise tonight, and I understand that you may disagree and you may wish to have specific answers to certain things. But the question I'm trying to raise tonight is whether that broad idea makes sense to you. The current zoning of the parking lot is a residential zone. Okay, I mean, so this is a proposal to change it to BG. It may very well stay a parking lot for the next fifty years.
Yeah.
I hope it doesn't, but that's, that's a whole other question. So I certainly can get the answer to question number one. I don't have it here in front of me. Question number two, I'm not sure how I could get an answer to that question, but maybe I can get some help from folks in town hall. But I think it gets into sort of the weeds. And that's, that's, I guess, my thought for that.
Yeah, I, I, I think my, personally, in terms of like, you know, baby steps, the zoning as this general, you know, business district as its current use as a parking lot isn't a really good fit and, and never has been consistent with its u, with its use. So I think this initial motion seems to be, you know, reasonable to be included within the, you know, general business district. And then, you know, certainly there's be a lot of steps afterward if there is ever going to be a, you know, a parking garage. But as proposed, I don't have a problem with, you know, this, this motion. But Janet?
So I, I, I wonder if we can talk about my motion or vote on it, because I know we wanted. But I just, I think the public should know whether we're having a public hearing, you know, the, the public hearing. If we're just having our, if we're in the dotted red box, you know, if, if, you know, we're having a public hearing, which is towards the end of the process, or we're just at the beginning of discussing this. And Doug, I love your question. I have like ten or fifteen more like that about the specifics of the proposal. What could be built there, you know, different things like that. I'd love to get into that. But I think we should decide if we're in the dotted red box, starting our process. Or are we in a formal, have we opened a public hearing? Are we, are we, you know? So I'd like, I, I think I'd love you guys to discuss the motion, whether you think we should go forward with the public hearing, cancel it, reschedule it, figure out when the, the clock or the, the calendar starts ticking.
So Pam, what's your understanding of, of the motion? Right now, Chris?
My understanding, let me just find it on the page. Okay, to, so Janet, I, I think I got this right. The wording is to cancel the public hearing, to begin the review process and deliberation process discussion tonight. And also to determine what was the date, the exact date of submittal in order to determine when the sixty-five days is over.
Okay.
I would say town council submittal, submittal to the planning board, but you've got, you've got it all excellently.
Good. Chris, please?
So I don't think you can just cancel the public hearing. I think you would have to close it. And you would probably have to make a statement about not being ready to make a recommendation to town council at this time. Because this is a public hearing and it has been duly advertised. So it exists, and in my mind, it's based on a referral that came from the town council. And it seemed like a proper referral to me.
Should, should I amend it to say to close this public hearing?
I think so.
Okay.
Without making a recommendation at this time.
Okay, without making a, okay, making a recommendation at this time, okay.
Andrew?
Yeah, Janet, I was just wondering if you'd feel comfortable just continuing it. I mean, I think like, I, I'm definitely would love to talk about this tonight. I think I've got, you know, some, some clear ideas. I think it, it does make sense to clarify, to make sure that we have the right date in place. Just, just, it's well managed. Like, we should, we should make sure we've got that. But I'd love to have the conversation, and I would say like, if we, if we don't feel like we can get to resolution, we just continue.
I, I would prefer just to have a normal process, the back and forth process, the review process.
Yeah, a continuance of the hearing would achieve that, I would think. But any other, or Doug?
Can I call the question and we just decide this and then we move on to maybe talking about it?
Okay, we haven't gotten any public comment at this point. So I'm wondering if we should do that at this time. Chris?
This whole thing is, is very odd to me. I'm not, I don't feel equipped to respond to it. But if you're going to close the public hearing, I think you should close the public hearing and then have your discussion. My recommendation would be to have, to not vote in favor of the motion to close the public hearing. But have your discussion tonight, entertain public comment, and then continue the public hearing to a date in the future. That would be my recommendation.
Okay, but we haven't had any public comment on this yet, so.
No, but that's why I'm saying, if you, so have the, have the decision about whether you're going to close the public hearing or not now. And then if you don't close the public hearing now, you can entertain public comment. And then later on, after you've had your discussion and you've heard from the public, then you can continue the public hearing. Meanwhile, we will make a determination with town council about what date they feel that they sent this to the planning board. And maybe we need to get a, you know, an attorney's opinion on that. But at least it will be, it will still be open. And there won't be a question of, oh, we have to start this whole thing over again. So that's my recommendation. Take a vote about whether you're going to close the public hearing now. If the vote is negative and you're not going to close the public hearing, then you hear from the public, you make your discussion, and you continue the public hearing.
Okay, so let, let Janet, you have her hand up?
I, I, I thought you were asking if, that you were interested in public comment on the idea of closing the hearing.
Yeah, and it sounds like Chris says.
I don't think that's worthwhile. I think you should just decide whether you're going to close the public hearing or not. And then if you decide not to close the public hearing, that's when you hear from the public.
So let's do a vote. Roll call with regard to closing. Who's in favor of closing the public hearing to get more information? And so Maria? And Andrew?
No.
So, all right, wait a minute.
Yeah, you're responding to the move, the motion to close the public hearing without making a recommendation at this time. And people are saying, no, they don't want to close the public hearing and not make a recommendation at this time. So.
So you don't want to close the public hearing, Andrew?
Don't want to close the public hearing. So continue on the roll call.
Okay, and Doug?
Could Pam just read the motion?
I can read it. Janet moved to close the public hearing without making a recommendation at this time.
And then to begin to discuss the zoning amendment tonight and to clarify what date legally town. and to clarify what date legally town council submitted the zoning amendment to planning board, which starts the sixty-five day public hearing requirement.
I don't think that's what you said.
I think.
But are you adding to it now?
It's uh, it's what I said, and I think Pam had sort of paraphrased it slightly.
Okay, can can you repeat it so we can get it down exactly like you said?
We'll do a revote here.
To begin to discuss the what?
To discuss the zoning amendment tonight and to clarify what date town council legally submitted the zoning amendment to the planning board starting the sixty-five day public hearing requirement clock, I guess. Mixing my metaphors.
But we're closing the hearing and essentially delaying with this proposal, correct Janet?
That's correct.
Okay.
So now you start voting again.
Yeah, let's do this again. Maria, are you in favor of this?
I don't know, just.
Um, so I I'm sorry, I have to ask a question now. So we've restated this, but it's still Janet made the motion and Andrew seconded. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, that let's in this in this rephrase sort of motion. Can we have a second to Janet's?
This is the same motion that I said, back to me.
All right, Andrew's second, okay. All right, with that said, um, let's take it to vote. Maria, do you have, it seems like you still have questions.
No, it's still a no.
Okay. And Andrew?
The no.
And Doug?
No.
And Tom is not here. Janet?
Yes.
Okay, and Johanna?
No.
And I'm a no, so the hearing stays open. And we will you did, you know, discuss further. I think, can we take some public comment at this point? Okay, so uh, I see might be Dorothy, I see Bob, Pam. Uh, state your name and address.
Hey, this is Dorothy.
Okay, hi Dorothy.
Uh, two two nine Amity Street. So I did sign on to this originally. Um, and then I realized that I'd made a mistake that changing it from an RG to a BG when the appropriate thing would be to a BL. And that would be primarily to limit the stories of the punitive future parking structure, so that the trees on the street would cover the view. And I do believe that um, it that would also, that would limit the stories to, of course, the number of stories in buildings seem to be changing a lot. So I always thought it was to three stories. And I do believe that George did say that he was in favor of it not going above that too. But that uh, the reason he thought BG was because we needed more coverage of the lot size. There, as has been stated, there are a lot of questions that we don't have answers for right away. But I just thought that the BL would make more sense because that's the buffer zoning between a residential zone and a business zone. And it's also the residential zone is not just an RG, it happens to be a local historic district, which means that additional care should be taken um, with how what happens around that district and within that district. I also would like to say that the question of the curb cut I think is a very key issue, all right? And that something that would need to be before any real vote or deliberation was done, what that would have to be found out. Whether that curb cut uh, which goes directly into the part of the lot, which would stay under the ownership of CVS should stay in that spot, or whether for the town parking structure, which might be built in the future, whether it would be moved somewhere else and what that would, the impact, I mean, the the impact would have to be studied on the residential houses near there. So um, I understand the the interest uh, and the need. Um, but the desire to have something that would be suitable adjacent to a residential and particularly a local historic district uh, would would lead me to think that if you were to rezone, it should be to a BL, which is a transitional zone between residential and uh, RG.
So just a quick question, Dorothy, weren't, I thought you were like a sponsor of this?
I I was, and then I said, if you change the RG to BL, not RG, the, in other words, changing RG to an to a BG is too big a jump. If you change it to the BL, which is the appropriate one, so I withdrew my name, I wrote in um, a a formal retraction that if it were to be from a RG to a BG, that I was not a co-sponsor. If it were to be from an RG to a BL, I could stay on as co-sponsor, but they did, they they decided to stick with the going from an RG to a BG. So therefore, I am not a co-sponsor of the measure as it stands, although I am sympathetic with some of the aspects of the approach.
Thank you, thank you. Um, so we have uh, Janet Keller, Hilda Greenbaum, and Sandy Musfrat within the uh, the public. So Janet, uh, state your name and address, please.
Hi Janet, you need to unmute yourself.
So unmute myself, Janet Keller, unmuted, um, one twenty pulpit hill road. Um, I share the concern for the um, the change from RG to BG um, within the context of feeling that it's July seventh, it's in the middle of vacation season. Um, and we're having a public hearing that came before your body in a uh, uh, a way that's not uh, the usual way. And um, there are all these other things before um, the different boards and before your board, um, there are stacks of zoning ordinances, and this one's a biggie. And um, I don't see it fitting into a coherent plan. I share the concern about the local historic district and the access and egress. Um, uh, other sites have, I've heard suggested um, maybe uh, of value. Um, and for public to participate, um, I will, I will be more diligent going after packets um, in the future. But um, I can see people who want to participate and who like me had a had uh, some some disruptions in our schedule leading up to the meeting, being in the situation I found myself in today, where I um, didn't have that in front of me. So um, for all these reasons, um, I, I hope you, whatever you do, you allow plenty of room and make the information easily available to the public because we care a lot. And this affects us, and we've seen how recent developments have affected both our downtown and our neighborhoods. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, and then Bob, Pam, which is not Dorothy, Pam, I assume.
I don't, I'm not sure.
We are separate people.
Okay, all right, so Bob, say say your name and and address. Thank you.
Robert, Pam, two two nine Amity Street. Dorothy, after silence yours. Thank you. Um, I'm a trustee of the library and it is of interest to the library that there be excuse me.
Yeah, definitely give some feedback.
I understand. Okay, um, it is of interest to us that there be parking near to the library, and this is probably the most convenient place for that. Um, I am not entirely certain why it has to move now. Um, there are a whole variety of things that that go through my mind as I, as I think about this. Um, one is right now, the the town lot is vacant much of the time because there is a fee associated with using it and people park in the CVS lot instead. Um, if a plan is proceeds in which there is a fee for this, um, I don't know how much revenue it will produce, particularly if it is substantially higher than uh, what we currently charge for the town lot. Uh, so there is a question simply about financial feasibility. We would want as a library, that a substantial number of slots essentially be free. Because that is how uh, we would like our patrons to be able to get into the library. I don't know whether that is going to be possible under the plan which is being discussed. It is clear that we are anticipating and hoping that the library project will move forward very soon. Um, it is now at a stage where um, hopefully within a year, we will be breaking ground. Uh, you should know that the the construction is all in the rear of the library. It will not be accessible from Amity Street, and so the only way that you will be able to get materials in and out is going to involve, as far as I can see, um, the the yard behind the library, and that's probably not enough. And so that's probably going to require um, some portion of the existing town lot. If that is so, then we really don't want to have construction beginning on a parking garage at the same time. There is also the question of how this is all going to affect the local businesses. My understanding is that in order for people to drive into the parking lot, they will have to come through the North Pleasant Street entrance. And that will probably have to be widened. If that is so, how will that affect the CVS, the the uh, restaurant, the Vietnamese restaurant, which is next to it on on that lot, will that affect that building? Uh, all of these are unclear and probably need to to be thought through very clearly and thoughtfully before um, there is a plan to go forward with this. And finally, what we're talking about is the rezoning of a lot in the middle of a block where, if I remember correctly, some seven or eight years ago, when there was a discussion about rezoning a portion of the Strong House lot um, to be BG, which would have allowed for a much easier construction project for the library. And that was vociferously opposed by people in the neighborhood because they said this is the first step at rezoning that whole strip of prospect, which would then uh, possibly mean that more of that side of the street would become BG. And they did not want to see that happen because of the effect on the other side of prospect. If we now do this in what is essentially the middle of the block, what do you think their feelings will be now? And will this in fact be exactly what they're afraid of, which is the beginning to rezoning um, that side of prospect? So there are a whole variety of things that it seems to me really need to be thought about before you do this. If it is not tied to a particular project, then it is being done in order to create the beginning of BG on that side of the street. If it is tied to that, then it may be making a non-conforming use conforming, but it is also effectively a spot zoning kind of issue. And I'm not sure that you really want to be doing that. So um, I've I've got, as you can tell, very mixed feelings about this. I would love to see better parking access to the library, but I don't want to see it done in such a way that it creates uh, more hostility in the town between one side and another. And I certainly don't want to see it really harming the little bit of uh, consumer friendly business that still exists in in downtown. I think that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we we let you go a little bit longer than normal, Bob, but it was all good. Thank you. Sandy Musfrat, um, say your name, address, you got three minutes.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I would like to record my support of Janet McGowan's motion, or now defeated. But since we've had a presentation from George Ryan, perhaps uh, one could ask him whether he's actually read the twenty nineteen Nygaard Nelson report on the parking requirements of the town. No answer?
Uh, we can uh, entertain that, um, George, would you like to respond to that?
The he mentions perception of a parking problem and the same site uh, same uh, sentence from outsiders. Would he let us know who those outsiders are? And how did he become aware of the perception of a parking deficiency? As a person that perceived, so who are they? And what is the data on which their perception is based? So again, I refer to the twenty nineteen Nelson Nygaard report. And even if you haven't read it all, page three lays it out in eight goals.
Okay, well, let's give George a chance if he chooses to respond uh, or not. Um, thank you, Sandy. Uh, George?
At this point, I think I'd like to hear more from the public.
Okay, so next would be Hilda Greenbaum, please.
Um, I've got a couple of issues. Um, one, the first one being, you have to count the given the the egress and 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 entrance into that lot being very difficult. You also have to, I think, count the number of parking places on Cole's Lane and North Prospect and Hallock. Hallock is a nightmare the way it is now, which is parking on one side. How many of those parking places are going to get lost and along North Prospect? And a lot of the people get in and out of this garage. If you consider that entrance from North Pleasant Street at a traffic light is a very bad place to have an entrance to a parking lot. So so you have to sort of figure out how many parking places are going to be a net gain if you get done with this cockamamie scheme. The other thing I wanted to bring up is, I have a little history in town meeting of over forty years. And in nineteen ninety-six, a very contentious article was passed to town meeting to build a garage at the bank center. And at the time, the compromise between the people that didn't want any garage and the people who wanted a four-story garage was that that garage would be so built that more stories could be added to it at any time in the future. Now, there are various stories going around about why that's no longer possible. But I think that somebody needs to find the as-built plans for that structure and see whether we can put more stories on top of that one before we mess up another neighborhood. And so um, one of the stories that needs to be checked out is that it was no longer possible once the the Judy's building was put there. For what reason, I don't know, but if that's in fact the case, it was a dereliction of the duty of the board that allowed it to be there if it prevented us from adding on to the town parking lot there. And 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 then another story that I've been hearing is that the last minute, somebody somebody in Town Hall, I don't know who changed the plan so that the, the structure of the garage was not reinforced to add extra stories, but I think that 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 issue has to be figured out before we start changing zoning on North Pleasant Street, a place that is a very difficult place for parking on. I guess I could also mention that a better place might be where a parking garage, I think also about twenty, twenty-five years ago, was proposed for Amity Street in conjunction with the, the People's Bank that's there now, that would go between a movie theater and a People's Bank. Danny Jones had proposed mixed juice building with stores on the bottom residential on the top, and the whole back was a parking garage. Now, whatever happened to those plans, whether he withdrew them or whatever happened, I don't know. But, but that certainly seems like a more accessible site to put a parking garage and add on to the one on, at the Bank Center than to try to, you know, take narrow roads in a historic neighborhood and, and and ruin some nice neighborhoods that we really don't want, we really want to preserve.
Thank you. Thank you, Hilda. I'm sorry, I didn't get your, I didn't have you say your name and address at the beginning there, but. Mary Sayer, say your name and address, please.
Mary Sayer, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, good. Okay, Mary Sayer, 159 Pine Street in North Amherst. I'm finding this discussion very interesting, so I'm glad you are discussing in front of the public hearing. I think that Dorothy Pam's point is a really important one, that making the big leap into to the business district means that much higher buildings can get put in. And also it means if a parking garage isn't put there, then it opens the door to a lot of things that we haven't thought about yet. And I think it being a historic district with the Strong House and the historic family houses and the Jones Library, it's really important to make that part of the transition space rather than say, this is downtown. So I'm, anyway, I'm finding this very interesting, and I, I think there needs to be also maybe before we start going into zoning, a real discussion about where the best place for a garage is before we start changing zoning on one specific lot for a garage that may go somewhere else. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. So Sandy, I think his hand has come down. Anne? Anne, state your full name and address.
Hi, Anne. Thank you. I just unmuted. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Anne Stright, 32 North Prospect Street in the Lovell House condominiums. We're relatively new to Amherst, having just moved here within the last year. And when we moved into Lovell House, we were fully aware that there was a parking lot, the CVS lot and the town lot across the street, but hidden by the row of trees that are there. One of the reasons we moved into this area was the historic district, the number of homes that are along the North Prospect that people have had for a good number of years, invested a lot of money in. An additional investment is going into these properties, trying to, you know, keep the neighborhood very nice and, and so on, including some additional ones that will be moved from, I think, student housing to single-family residence, hopefully in, in the near future. We have observed, as has been said, there's very little activity in the city lot. There's very, most activity is in the CVS lot, and the flow onto North Prospect is not unreasonable. I mean, it is a difficult, you have to access from Main Street, and then they go out onto North Prospects. Very few people, I don't think, come around Cowles and come into the lot from, from the other side. So we would be absolutely opposed to a parking garage in this space that would create both access and flow out problems onto a residential street. I mean, this is a residential street with people that have invested a great deal of monies. I will also say to follow up the Janet's note earlier, we just learned of this meeting and this issue and this question about two weeks ago. So I will say that this was news to us, and we do get the local paper, so apologies if it was in there, we missed it. So I'm hoping that you'll have additional comments. And I would also like to hear, my understanding is that there was a, a study done in Amherst of parking, and there appears to be no significant problem. I think the best idea I've heard all night is from our friend at the library, is making that parking area for the, the library and make it free to access the library. So that one is a good idea. So thank you, and, and we hope that we can continue this conversation, but we are definitely opposed to changing the zoning of that lot in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Again, this is, this is just the this is not about a parking garage, but it is, you know, only about a zoning change that would conceivably, you know, allow, you know, a parking change down the road, but that's way beyond many decisions have to be made. So this is just you know, initial, you know, zoning change. So George, do you, can you, you want to respond to some of these?
I just want to just draw the attention of everyone to how this got started before COVID. There was strong interest from a number of downtown developers and working with bid, open to the idea of a public-private partnership that would be, as a number of us saw as a win-win for both the town and for the downtown. And so that's how this, this began, and then COVID hit. And so everything, as you know, stopped. And at this point, with us coming out of COVID, one of the questions is whether this interest is still there. But there will be no movement forward if the zoning stays the way it is. So one member of the public's already stated their objection to a parking garage there, period, of any kind. I'm not sure about some of the others, maybe they would say the same. But the question to the planning board is whether they, looking at this in the big picture, agree that there should never be a parking garage there. All this zoning proposal is trying to do is make it possible for something to be built. The land would still be owned by the town under any scenario. Revenues would be lost, but the gain would be much greater, it seems to me, in terms of, of that counting up parking spaces lost sort of game. So that's where it originated. That's why we brought it back. And, you know, that's what we hope the board will consider, is that basic question, do you think this makes sense for this area? And given its current zoning, it seems like a zoning change would be appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it certainly makes sense. I mean, we're not approving a parking garage. There's certainly many other alternatives that the town needs to look at. You know, the, you know, expanding upon the, the boltwood parking area. But this seems like a no-brainer. To me, it's already a parking lot, it's town-owned land. Chris, you have your hand up.
I just wanted to clarify two technical things. And one of them is the issue of spot zoning. And this would not be spot zoning. This would be an extension of the BG zoning district. The BG exists along North Pleasant Street, so if you were to extend it back to North Prospect Street, that would be consistent with existing zoning, so it wouldn't be spot zoning. And the other question that came up was changing this from RG to BL. And I agree that BL is a transition zone, and from that standpoint, that might make sense. But the building coverage that's allowed in the BL is thirty-five percent. And this lot is already very small, so to only allow thirty-five percent of it to be covered with a building would be, it would make it not worth it to rezone the lot. So those are just two things I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Janet? And then Andrew?
So I was, um, I, I was told, and I, I think maybe people can confirm, is that the town's portion of the parking lot was acquired by a taking from Louis, Lewis or Louis Food back in eighteen, nineteen eighty-nine. And the town paid the, the grocery store four hundred and eighty-five thousand, and now the property is assessed at about a hundred and seventy thousand. When I looked at the map that was provided, it seemed like the CVS was, had a bunch of parking spaces on town land. And so that made me wonder if the CVS is paying the town for them, or if there's an agreement between the town and CVS about the use of the town land for its spaces. And is, does CVS plan to continue using it as a parking lot? Are they in on this, on these discussions about building a parking garage? And then, so I just wondered if we could talk about the CVS portion of that, if there's a current agreement. If, you know, if the map that I'm looking at is correct. I have a million other questions. One of them is like, what are the dimensions of this lot? And are there any build-out diagrams of what could be built on BG versus BL versus COM versus BVL? Because all of those allow garages. And so it wasn't clear to me, is this lot sufficient, big enough? How many spaces? How many, you know, I, I have just dozens of questions. But I wonder if we could just start with the CVS lot? And if there's, if they have an agreement right now to use the town spaces, are they really on the town land? Are they planning to build the parking garage too, or do they want to keep their lot separate?
Chris, do you want to?
I don't know if the town has an agreement with CVS to have CVS's parking spaces on town land. That's a question that I can ask. I don't know what the town's arrangement with CVS is about crossing over their land to exit the parking lot. So that's another question that I can get an answer to. And the other thing, are there plans to, for build-out? I know that some architects in town have come up with plans. I don't have access to those plans. I was shown those plans once a long time ago, but I don't really have any memory of exactly what property is covered and whether CVS is a willing partner in this. I think the owners of that property may be going through some transitions. And I have not spoken with them, and so I have no, no knowledge of what their thought process is on this.
Thank you, Chris. Andrew?
Thanks. I just wanted to be clear, and the BL is thirty-five percent coverage?
Thirty-five percent coverage. Thirty-five percent.
Eighty-five?
Thirty-five percent building coverage.
All right, I'm looking at lot coverage. Okay, so the BG, but what, all right, because I think, George, you'd mentioned the ninety-five percent being important, maximum building for BG is seventy percent? So it'd be half, I, I guess, George, would you agree then that, all right, what's your perspective? Is the BL, given its building and lot coverage, would the BL be able to sustain a parking garage?
It would not, if, if.
Okay.
And I was about to try to explain it to Dorothy Pam, but seemed to not have any success, that the reason that we have always asked for the BG is that a BL simply is not feasible.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought. I, I guess also, like, I'm a couple thoughts. One, I, I think you make a good point, George. If if the, the, the thought is that there isn't a parking need, then no developer's going to want to build this, right? And it will sit as a parking lot probably in perpetuity. So I think that there's a little bit of a, a market force protection there that would keep a large parking lot from being built if it's not going to be used. I will say, one of the things that happened in COVID, which I was pretty excited about, was the fact that we had so much seating that was added outside. I know that that was, you know, designed as a temporary measure, but it got me thinking like, what, what a much more interesting streetscape we would have if we had less on-street parking and more, like, on-street seating, right? And that, that would actually be a pretty, pretty cool opportunity for us to make the downtown be something that's maybe more inviting and exciting. If we could concentrate the parking, I imagine there's probably a lot of store owners who would rather have, you know, five tables out front than, than a car in a, in a single, in a single lot, the single spot. I, I thought Hilda's comment, I hadn't even considered that. I thought that was a pretty interesting one relative to the Bang's Garage, like, can we build up on that or not? I, I've, I've never, I, I went to that lot once, and it was like a horrific experience trying to just navigate the turns, and I'll never go back in there again. It's like, to me, a complete wasted opportunity. I wonder if there's a way to improve that. I, I don't know that there would be, but whether we might actually improve utilization there. But overall, like, I, I think this makes sense. I think that, I, I like the idea of being able to concentrate the parking in a, in a single area. I'm excited about the opportunity of maybe opening up more creative uses of our sidewalks and, and streetscapes. I think that there is that control mechanism. I, no one will build it if we're not going to be able to put cars in it. It's, it's not, you know, I think the garages would be the highest and best use of that space. I, I do agree that it would be a problem if we convert this to BG and then, you know, it gets, it gets developed into something other than the parking garage. But the town owns the lot, right? So like, we would have, we would have say over that. It's not like a, a private developer could come in and build something there. They'd have to purchase the lot from us. So another control mechanism, mechanism in place. So overall, I, I'm excited about the opportunity. I, I think that it's something that I would recommend that we again, maybe, maybe there is some really positive upside that we can, we can leverage to make the streetscape be more, more vibrant and exciting. Thanks.
Good points, Andrew. Thank you. George, you have your hand up, and then Maria.
There's real interest, and I believe there still is very real interest in the private sector in building a public garage on that lot. There is no interest, has never been expressed by anyone that I'm aware of, of doing anything with a boltwood lot. And there's also the issue, and part of the reason probably has to do with the fact that, of where you put a ramp, assuming you could even put a second story on that, and that's a question that no one has been able to answer to my satisfaction. I've heard answers both yes and no, but even if you could, it's, it's very difficult to imagine how you could construct any kind of ramp. Also, given the fact that you already have existing parking there, and you have delivery trucks that are ten or twelve feet high. So I guess my point is simply that there has been zero interest from any sector on doing anything with the boltwood. But there is very real interest in the CVS lot. Also, this would only be done with a private, by a private entity, and the town would not be spending any money on this at all.
Maria, please.
Thanks, Jack. I wish I had more time this past week. I would have dug through years and years of notes from, I felt like this Groundhog Day. I know we've discussed this exact thing at previous zoning subcommittee meetings. I feel like there was an article about this. I found an article where we did approve that parking garages were allowed more in, like, for a site, instead of special permit, we relaxed it to site plan review and BG, BBC, COM, and maybe BL, I can't remember. But this is something that I know has been of interest for a long time, and we discussed it for so many hours, and I just wanted to like dig through all these minutes and just see what the pros and cons were, because I just didn't have time to research that and really get into that to get more information, to really give my two cents. But I, Andrew's points are great. I mean, it is basically, yeah, your downtown property is so valuable. The land is so scarce. It makes perfect sense to concentrate the cars in one area so that downtown can be for people, for people walking, biking, enjoying the outdoors, and get the cars the heck out of the way. And so this is a good first step. Obviously, there are tons of things to work out as far as the weeds, you know, the, the parcels, the access, the adjacencies to other residences and other historical districts, but without this first step, that can't even be studied, or it's not worth studying because it's not even possible. So, yeah, that, that's been said so many times at so many different meetings, I feel like, and I just, I haven't had time to dig through memos and minutes, but I do feel like we've had really healthy discussions about this because there was interest. And so And, um, so this is a, yeah, another try at it. And, um, I feel like the only way to really move forward, uh, is to approve this first step, and then let's do the studies. Um, people will be able to find funding, to get consultants, to get a designer, architects, get civil, you know, people who can give us real numbers and answers. Uh, but without this, um, yeah, it's, it's been, I don't know, maybe decades. I, Chris would know better, but I feel like I've certainly talked about it in meetings, uh, many, many times. And I just wish I had dug up, um, you know, a lot of the pros and cons, so I could be more informed with, um, opinions other than just a feeling that it makes a lot of sense, um, to concentrate the cars, as Andrew just said, so I won't reiterate his same points. But, um, but that's my, uh, first feeling about this, um, proposal.
Thanks, Maria. I, uh, normally we take a break at eight, and it's nine. So I, I would offer that we do a little five-minute break right now, because we do have a couple more items, uh, on the agenda, including, uh, concluding this hearing. Um, so can we reconvene, you know, nine oh seven-ish? And everybody put their video and audio on mute. Yeah, Pam, let me know when. We have everybody back. Yeah, this is a good view.
Okay.
Thanks for hanging in there, George. Uh, another long night.
Uh, I, I'm trained by town council, so we're only halfway through a typical council meeting. So, uh, but you guys work hard too, I can see that. And you've been working regularly, week after week, and I, I really respect that, admire that. But, uh, yeah, this is, this is only halfway through my usual Monday nights, so.
Let's see. So I, I don't see Andrew yet, or, um, Janet. There's Andrew. So I don't see Johanna or, or Janet yet.
Okay.
My computer is just saying nine oh seven. My phone is saying nine oh nine. There's Johanna.
Uh, Janet, uh, actually had the next question, so I'm sure, uh, she'll be popping in.
Okay, Jack, Janet has returned.
Okay, so you wanna get us back online?
Yeah, we're good to go.
Okay, so, uh, we returned from a break, um, it's nine ten, and Janet?
So I, I've, I, there, there has been a, a study of the three parking locations, the Bang Center, um, the Amity Street Lot, and the CVS Lot. And I think that would be good to circulate amongst the planning board. Um, and then also, um, you know, I'd love to see Maria Chow's notes. And also, I know that there's been at least three parking studies of downtown, none of them recommending a parking garage, and saying parking is sufficient, but kind of hidden, unknown. And I wondered if we could find out, like, I don't know if I wanna read like a hundred and fifty pages of those reports, but really what they said about parking garages, and maybe locations or upsides and downsides, so we don't have to kind of redo the wheel. Um, so that, that's some information I'd be interested in having us look at. Um, so I'm kind of wondering, like, if you built a parking garage on the CVS lot, like, how many spaces are there now? How many can you get inside three stories? Um, is, would it be underground? Like, is, you know, what's the gain? You know, what's the cost? Um, and then, you know, versus other lots? And so, you know, I think that, um, that would be really valuable, some, some detail. Um, it looks like a very tight space for a parking lot. And I, you know, I look at the Amity Street Lot, and I think People's Bank has space, Bank of America has space. You know, there's a lot of, you know, it's a lot of space, you know, like Bank of America isn't really using it during the day. At night, it's used more, um, you know, at the same time, you would wanna buffer the South Prospect people from tall buildings. And so I think we need to keep that three-story idea, and also buffering the neighborhoods. I also think that, you know, on the BG, you still have setback requirements on the side. It's adjoining residential districts, you have twenty feet. And so I wonder, like, you know, has anyone done any rough drawings of what actually is possible there? And how many spaces? You know, you're gonna lose spaces probably from what you have now, at least on one floor. And so I, I feel like I need a lot more detail about the proposal. I mean, developers are talking about it, who are they? What are they, what are they seeing, like, that they could build? You know, and it, you know, it'd be great to see a 3D picture of a good, really attractive, you know, but not like a final drawing, but, you know, how many spaces can you get? Are we talking about an extra eighty spaces? Can we get more on Amity Street? And for God's sake, someone please tell me if we can build another floor or two on the Bang's Lot. You know, I mean, I, I don't feel like this is, we can keep talking about this as if we, you know, live in some cave somewhere and can't get the answers.
Yeah.
You know?
So, just, so Janet, I, I, I think what we're just looking at is, th, you know, the first step, we're not really, uh, you know, talking about a parking garage, although that is a potential intent. Uh, but, but this is town-owned land, it's a parking lot already, and it's kind of consistent with the, you know, adjacent, uh, use. And I think, you know, we would be prudent with regard to the eventual development of any sort of structure at this property. But we're just, we're, I think we're just looking at the zoning, and we're not, we're, there's not, there's not gonna be details available for us, because this is not, this, this way ahead. But I agree, you have great ideas with regard to, um, you know, the People's Bank area, the, 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 you know, boltwood, you know, area. But I just think this is, this is, is a little bit of a, of a fix that really has really no major repercussions at this point in time, um, my opinion, but, um.
Can we get the study of the three different parking lots that has already been done? Yeah, I don't, I mean, you're sort of saying I don't need information, and, you know, I feel like I do need information. I mean, you know, how do you?
We're not talking about a parking garage. We're just talking about a change to, you know, town-owned land that's adjacent, you know, adjacent to the, the BG that should be BG anyway, by, you know, and with its current use, it's more. Uh, Chris, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that there was a study done before the Boltwood Garage was built, so that's back in the late eighties or early nineties. Um, we can probably resurrect that study, but I'm not sure that it's going to be completely relevant to this situation, but I'd be happy to, um, do that research. Thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
So I still would like that information on what can be built there, and how many spaces.
Okay, I think that's a, that, that's many steps forward. Uh, and Doug?
Yes, uh, seeing that it's nine fifteen and we have other things on our agenda, and it seems like we're pretty, I think the sense I'm getting from the conversation tonight has been that we will be continuing this hearing. Um, I'd like to move that we continue this hearing to a date certain, uh, not before, uh, August fourth.
Yeah, I, I forget the dates that we were talking about. Um, Chris, where do you see, if we continue the hearing, what would be potential dates for that?
Um, I guess I would recommend August fourth, because what do you have then? You have the Greenfield Savings Bank, and you have the Sweet Alice Parking Area. So that would, that would probably be a good date, and then, um, continue it to seven thirty on August fourth.
Okay, is there a second to Doug's? Uh, Andrew? Okay, um, for the discussion amongst the board. I see none. All right. Um, we can take a roll call here. Uh, Maria?
Yes.
Andrew?
Hi.
Doug?
Hi.
Tom, or Tom's on here. Uh, Janet?
Yes.
And Johanna?
Hi.
And myself, hi. Okay, so that's six zero for continuance, and we're looking at August fourth. Thank you.
May I say thank you?
Thank you, George.
To the board and to, uh, to Chris and to Rob. I appreciate all you've done, and I'll see everyone on August fourth, and hopefully.
Thank you, George. Thank you. And next on the item, we have um, SPR two thousand, two zero five dash zero 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 one, Emerald Shopping Center, uh, Point Science, Inc., to present new signs for CVS Pharmacy at one sixty-five University Drive, in accordance with condition number two of SPR two zero zero five dash zero 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 one. And who do we have? Uh, gonna present this, Chris, or?
You know, I'm not sure. Um, I can present it. I'm not sure if there's anyone in the audience who's, um, here to present it. I don't see anybody raising their hand.
I would not fault them by the, by the length of the, uh, prior proceedings, so, um.
So essentially, it is the CVS building that's at University Drive, which is in the Big Y Plaza. And when that, um, when that development was expanded a number of years ago, um, there was a site plan review, um, approval that stated that any new signs must be submitted to the planning board for approval at a business meeting. So that's what this is all about. So, um, looking at the new signs, if Pam would bring up the, um, images, that would be helpful. There's an image of the CVS building, and it shows it in conjunction with, um, the parking lot there. And then we can walk through the signs that are being proposed.
Maybe we could put a parking garage here?
Delayed reaction there.
Keep going. Okay, so here is the property, and you can see that the CVS building is part of the bigger, um, Big Y property. It's actually a property unto itself, but it's part of this greater shopping center. Um, and it's essentially surrounded by University Drive and parking lot. And so Pam, if you could continue to scroll through. Um, and this shows you the condition, condition two, I believe it is, any new signs submitted to the planning board for approval at a business meeting. And that is really true of this whole shopping center, as you well know, because we studied the Big Y signs a while ago. So, um, what they're proposing to do, they're, they have their signs shown on this, um, plan here. So there are signs one through eight, and we can go through those signs, or actually, one through six. Let's go through them one by one. So, um, the image on the left here is the existing signs. Um, the existing, uh, I'm not sure what it's even says. I think it says something about pharmacy. And then there's blue writing and CVS. So they're giving you the, um, the sizes of these, um, existing signs. And the, the proposed signs are And the, the proposed signs are um, pretty much equal in size, if not smaller. And there's a health hub sign, and the middle sign is going to be blank. And the one on the right says, um, I think it says something about clinic. Maybe we could go down below and look at the individual signs. Do they show the individual signs? There it is, Minute Clinic. So that's what the signs are going to look like on this um, side of the building that's facing. I guess that's east, is that right? Or south? Maybe that's south. So does anyone have questions about this? Do you want to look at the sizes of these things in relation to the sizes of the existing?
Um, uh, well, Andrew has his hand up.
I, I'm just ready to make a motion to approve this. I mean, I think if you like, put the two pictures next to each other and didn't say which one was which, I'd be, I'd be impressed if we knew which was the current and which was the future. I think it's like a non-issue, and I'd like us to just, I, I would, I would propose a reapproval.
All right. And then there's also this, um, the monument sign where they're proposing to take out the CVS and put in the heart with CVS Pharmacy. So that's um, right here. Yep.
So Doug, you got a second?
Yes, I am, Jack.
All right, any further discussion? Uh, yeah, 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 I, I see none. So we can do a, a roll call here to approve this. Maria? Andrew?
Hi.
Doug?
Hi.
Janet?
This is a personal record for the planning board, and I approve.
All right, and Johanna?
Hi.
And I am self, myself, hi. So we're good to go on that. So we can move on to new business. And Chris, we have a chapter sixty-one A release request, property of Thomas F. Mitchell Family Trust and Mitchell Family Trust uh, land on Sunderland Road. Portion of assessor's map, parcel ID two C dash twelve, which is eighteen point five acres.
We have Tom Reedy here, um, representing the owner, and so you may want to hear from him. He can explain this um, better than I can. Attorney Tom Reedy.
I'm, I'm moving attorney Reedy over into the panelists. If he makes his way.
How's that?
Hello, Mr. Reedy.
Hello.
Hi, Tom.
To hear you. Hi, everybody. I, I'd show you, I'm, I just pulled off the highway. I'm in the car, so you can't really see me. I was coming back from a hearing in Douglas. But nobody wants to hear about that because you've had a long night. So let me get to business. So yeah, uh, the, the Mitchell family has a contract to sell their about eighteen point five eight acres, which is a portion of the land that they own between Montague Road and Sunderland Road. And that eighteen point five eight is currently under chapter sixty-one A, as is the balance of their land. But they want it, um, as you know, under sixty-one A, section fourteen, they have got to provide a notice of intent to convert uh, the land to other use. And the town has a, a right of first refusal. I believe the purchase price is one point six million, but Chris Presstrip could probably correct me if I'm wrong. Um, we, we would request that uh, the, the board suggests to town council, and I'll be there Monday evening, that town council does not exercise that uh, option to purchase. The town could probably find better use for one point six million dollars, and, and this just doesn't seem like a piece of property that has connectivity or um, serves any of the purposes potentially that the town would want to use it for. So we would request uh, that, that the planning board suggests the town does not act.
Thank you, Tom.
Sure.
Um, you know, I'm just getting uh, my screens here together. So uh, any planning board comment on this? I see, oh, Chris?
I just wanted to say that your duty is to recommend to town council whether you think the town should purchase this property for one point six million dollars. And um, I have not heard anyone in the town government um, speak in the affirmative about that. Sometimes we do hear people speaking in the affirmative and recommending purchase because the property is contiguous with some other town-owned property. But I haven't heard that in this case. So just wanted to make sure that you understood what you would be doing. You're making a recommendation either to exercise the right of first refusal or not to exercise the right of first refusal.
So, uh, Tom, the access to this property would be from Sunderland Road or?
Correct.
Okay.
Off of Sunderland Road, correct.
Current uses is what?
Agricultural. So I, there, I believe there are hayfields, at least to the east of, there's a probably a perennial stream. We're actually in the process of going through an ANRAD, but uh, I believe that there's hayfields, and I, and I know I saw a tractor out there maybe two weeks ago to the west of that stream planting something, and I don't know what they were planting, but a crop. So it, it is agricultural currently.
And I'm just trying to get my bearings on Cal's Road. What significant?
So Pam should probably bring up a map. Pam, can you bring up the map so people can see? And part of it is zoned um, commercial. Well, I don't know, Mr. Reedy should explain how it's zoned.
Yeah, so it's, so, so from the uh, westerly property line, which is also Sunderland Road, about, and if, and traveling towards the east, about eighteen point five eight acres is zoned PRP. So professional research park. That is a portion that is being removed. And then the balance of the land from that zone line to the east property line, which is also Montague Road. I believe it's RN, um, but, but don't quote me on that one. It is a residential zoning district. I just don't off the top of my head remember, remember what it is.
Pam, can you bring up the um, map that shows the zoning? I think it follows this. It's part of that letter that was sent from Mr. Reedy's office.
So that, that's part of the packet, is that right?
Part of the packet. I think it's like page three in the packet or page, I don't know.
I think it's page fifty in the materials.
Okay.
That, that bisects them.
It's yellow and red. That's how you can recognize it.
Okay, I'm going fast. So if you see it.
It's an RO.
Thank you.
There. Should be the next.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there you go.
There we go.
So the red is the eighteen point five, and that's the portion that is as being requested to come out of chapter sixty-one A. The RO is um, not planned to come out of sixty-one A. And I'm not sure if the person who's proposing to purchase this property is proposing to buy that portion in the RO or just the portion in the PRP. It's a little bit hard to read this plan because it's showing PRP land as red, and we normally think of that as commercial, but it is PRP, professional research park.
So uh, I'm wondering if, if Tom or Chris can kind of go, go over this because Amber says the most, you know, conservation, you know, recreation land percentage-wise of any town, you know, in the Pioneer Valley. So I'm, I'm just wondering what's the process involved there? Just kind of go over it one more time. Um, now, I don't see any issues, but it's.
So the process would be.
So.
If the town felt that it was worthwhile to acquire this property, and it felt like it wanted to um, match the purchase price that's in the purchase and sale agreement, then the town would um, then the town council would decide to exercise its right of first refusal and purchase this property. But nobody in the town government has said that they, as far as I know, said that they want to purchase this property or that they have a use for this property, and it's not contiguous with other town-owned land. So those are the things that we normally think about. If we have a particular use in mind for a property or if it's contiguous with other conservation land or something like that, so.
I, I don't think the town needs any more land of this nature. It's, it's based on the statistics, but Janet, you have your hand up?
Um, I'm actually a little, I, I, I'm, I'm, I don't know if I've missed the giant boat, but I had no idea that we were being asked for, to recommend to town council that this land not be brought. And so it says chat on the says chapter sixty-one A release request. I wasn't quite sure what our role in that, because I know that goes to town council. Um, so I have, I mean, I had no idea that this is what Mr. Reedy was going to ask us. And I actually feel like I have almost no information about the land itself. Um, we know it's farmland. We know we have a river through at least two or three streams. It's got wetlands. It's, I know that's flood plain because someone told me. Um, so I don't know, I don't know anything about the soils. I don't know about the ecological importance. I don't know the agricultural importance. I know that we're cultivating more land than they were when I, two thousand and three, when I moved here. I have literally no basis to make a recommendation to town council other than Mr. Reedy statements. And so I, I don't know why, why it's even on the agenda. I mean, if, if you want the, if you want the planning board to make a recommendation, I think we need to know a lot more about this land and its significance as agricultural land, as wetland. I don't know. I just don't know anything. And um, you know, I don't know anything about this land other than, I didn't know that we were talking about this. So I would need to know a lot more information for recommending anything to the town council.
Yeah, it, it's on the agenda. I mean.
But it says release request.
May I?
So I had no idea.
Yeah, so Chris?
So there was material in your packet describing what chapter sixty-one A land is and how it goes into or comes out of chapter sixty-one, sixty-one A, sixty-one B. I tried to provide you the state law that um, relates to this and an excerpt from a handbook that various towns and cities in Massachusetts use in determining what to do with um, chapter sixty-one A land when it is requested to come out. And in the past, um, the planning board has had many of these requests, and um, it's, it's kind of a what institutional memory on the part of planning board members who have been around for a while, who um, you know, help other planning board members to understand what the process is. Uh, I think I've described what the process is, and the materials that were in your package should have described them. I think Ms., Ms. McGowan is asking for specific information about this land, like soils and agricultural um, benefit and, and all of that. So perhaps that's information that she needs to make the decision as to whether she would recommend that the town acquire this property. Um, so that's.
So Doug?
Thanks, Jack. I just wanted to say, uh, you know, I came on the board in January of last year. And sometime last year in the spring, uh, we had a similar request that was a little farther up Sunderland Road. And uh, that was my first experience with the chapter one sixty-one release. I don't know if it was accidental, but at that meeting, Dave Zomek, I think, was present and uh, talked about how the town had a strategic plan to buy a lot of the, the land that was on the west side of Route one sixteen, I think it was, just a kind of across the street from the parcel we were talking about. Um, and so when I hear Chris say tonight that there's nobody in town government that she's aware of who is advocating for this, I think of the Concom and uh, you know, the other people who are interested in land preservation and think about this, you know, how we prioritize what we want to buy. And the fact that, that Chris is saying that she's not hearing anybody advocating for buying this suggests to me that the other people in town government and probably the other committees that uh, would be interested in this have, have not expressed any interest. So on that basis, I am, I am okay with proceeding to a vote on, on these parcels. Thank you.
Thanks. So uh, do we have, all right, Janet?
So, I'm sorry, the master plan, one of the tasks is for the Amers to get an inventory of its farmland and its priorities. And, you know, what it wants to protect. So is there a strategic plan? And I've just never seen it. I would love to see that and have the Concom and the Farm Commissioner, anybody weighed in. I, I don't want to assume silence is assent. Um, it's actually, there's like twenty, two thousand legal cases on that. Um, but I, I just think is, is there an inventory of farmland? Is there a priority list? Is there a strategic plan? And, you know, I'd love to see that. That'd be great if we had been implementing the master plan in that way.
Okay, I, I, I just would reiterate that Amers has an abundance of this type of land to where we, we have the most of anyone in Pioneer Valley. So uh, I think we should scrutinize this, but um, um, you know, with, with, with Chris's uh, input that, you know, there's another, you know, there's no other concerns uh, that she is knowledgeable, you know, within, you know, the, the town departments. I'm, I think this is, this is a go. So uh, Chris, you have your hand up, and then Andrew, and then Doug?
I wanted to say that there is um, this, the open space and recreation plan has um, information about lands that the town would like to acquire. But the town needs to be wary about expressing interest in land because it can end up competing with other purchasers. So usually, when the town is interested in purchasing something, it kind of keeps a low profile about it. Um, so I don't think that there's a master list of um, of land that the town is planning to acquire. I think it's more like um, people in town hall have ideas in their heads about land that would be worthwhile to acquire, land that is part of the Mount Holyoke Range or land that abuts other conservation areas that the land, that the town owns, which may be in the conservation, uh, excuse me, in the open space and um, recreation plan. But I guess what I'm saying is it's, it's not realistic to expect that there's an inventory of all the properties that the town might like to acquire. Because in some cases, we don't want to let everybody know that we might like to acquire it. And we come along and we say, we bring it to the Conservation Commission or the Planning Board or Town Council or other bodies. And, you know, when the opportunity arises, and the opportunity might arise when someone passes away or when someone decides to donate land or sell land or whatever. But it, it's not a very, um, it's not a completely straightforward process. So there is, there's not an inventory of all the properties that the town wants to acquire.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, Andrew, and then Doug, you can speak after if you want, so.
Yeah, I, I was, I would say, I, I think I agree with Janet here. I think there's, there's really no additional context relative to the value of properties. It's the right of first refusal, right? So I don't know that necessarily the, the concerns of like impacting the purchase price by sharing potential interest necessarily come into play here. I, I imagine like, we'll probably all land in the same spot, but I do think it would be uh, useful to have a bit more concrete feedback. I think the silence is, is not consent. It's a valid point here. I imagine it's a quick ask of, of, of Concom, just to say, is this, you know, is this something that um, you feel is of value um, that we should consider? I, I would think that's really like their role in this process here. I, I, I would otherwise agree that it's, it's just sort of, um, you know, our general feel as to what we think the quality of that particular parcel is without a lot of additional content.
Um, I'm going to ask, is Zomack, if he's available to join the meeting?
And maybe I could answer if I, if you don't mind.
Please, Tom.
Chairman, so, so under sixty-one A, section fourteen, we have to provide notice to certain uh, parties. And so we provide it to town council, to the town manager, to the planning board, to the Conservation Commission, to the Board of Assessors, and to the State Forester. So those are the groups that under statute, we have to provide notice to. So all of those groups are going to give, say, for the state forester. So all of those groups are going to give, say, for the State Forester. All of those groups and it ultimately culminating in the town council are going to give an opinion on whether or not uh, the town should exercise their right of first refusal. And so when we're, when you're saying you're talking about the Conservation Commission, they have and are, I I don't know if they already have. Um, I suspect that they may have already discussed this, um, property and whether or not it should be, you know, they would potentially make a recommendation to the uh, board, to the town council to exercise that right of first refusal or not. And so when we, when we just take a step back and we think about the groups that did receive the notice that are making their own response, formulating their own answer, the planning board need not personal opinion here, rely on what the other boards are doing because we've given all those other boards notice. And so you know, when I have asked you for, uh, and I, and I haven't appeared in front of the Conservation Commission, they didn't ask me to come. Chris asked me to come here to to give the presentation this evening. When I say make the recommendation, uh, it is ultimately town council's decision. And so the board may say, yes, we want you to buy it for one point six million dollars. Um, or no, we don't want you to buy it. And in either circumstance, the town council ultimately can do what it is that that they want to do. So while I know I haven't given any additional context about the land, um, at this stage, frankly, it is that that if the town were to exercise their right of first refusal, they would then step into the shoes of the contract purchaser and be responsible for acquiring the property for one point six million dollars. Um, and so that's where where this is at this point.
Thank you, Tom. Um, sorry, I was trying to do a little research.
So we have Maria and Chris, Jack.
Okay, so Maria, then Chris, or yeah.
Oh, I I would say let Chris go. She's probably got some.
Yes.
Oh, I just, I just wanted to mention that, um, this is on the town council agenda for Monday night. So, um, not that I want to put any pressure on you. And I'm not going to put pressure on you. It's completely up to you to decide. And if you're not ready to decide, that's fine. But I just wanted to mention the fact that it is on the town council agenda for Monday night.
Very good. I'm still navigating my my GS.
You may also be interested, and I think I'm at liberty to say this, that this property is being considered, um, for a um, what? Sort of a, an incubator space. And you may have seen articles about the erupter um, in the town paper. So.
Really?
Yeah, this is the research, yes, research and development with light fabrication, small batch fabrication. That's, that's, and that that requires, you know, and I didn't want to get into it this evening just because I no, don't want to conflate topics because that's a, that's a whole separate approval process, which will be back in front of this board. But yes, this is, this is the property.
I I I did not know that. So, uh, but yeah, that's a very exciting thing for for Amherst. Good to know. Um, and I'm looking again, I'm I'm getting distracted by my research. Uh, so Maria and then Doug?
Uh, if I think back to previous, uh, uh, approvals like this, or sorry, projects ahead of in front of us like this, um, we don't normally have like a survey soil samples, uh, you know, studies, it's literally the parcel map, what zone it's in. And then Chris gives us, um, her input from town hall. Um, I can't recall a single one that's come in front of us where we have any more information than that. Honestly, I I I feel like this is not unusual. Um, I don't want to say it's like we're rubber stamping, but I do say that it's this sounds like a very safe, uh, decision. Um, like Doug said, that was, you know, David Zomak came just to sort of describe sort of town, big picture kind of stuff. But if nothing has been raised about this parcel, I don't see any need for more information as far as the site itself and the, you know, its features. Um, so I just wanted to put that out there because I'm trying to, as as someone who's been on the board for a while, I'm trying to recall previous and I can't remember a single one that you know, had anything beyond like just seeing the GIS map for the parcels. That's it.
Uh, and Doug and then Janet?
Yeah, now that I realized that that this is the parcel that's related to the erupter, I I need to recuse myself from all of the deliberations related to this. I have a very tenuous family connection to that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Janet?
Thank you, Doug. Appreciate that. So, um, when when we had the Salza, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that right. Property, Dave Zomak gave us kind of a lengthy history of the properties and the town's interest in it. He talked about wetlands. He talked about the soils and then it was kind of rocky with some ledge. And so we have none of this information. I mean, I do know there's wetlands on it and other streams. I know it's part of a flood plain, you know, district. It's a recharge area. I know nothing with the soils. I don't know how it, the history of the site. So I I'm going to abstain from voting because I just don't have enough information to make a recommendation or not. I don't really have an opinion on how much farmland Amherst should have or not have, or, you know, percentages and things like that. I just, I think that if you're asking me to make a decision about this property, I need some information about it. And I appreciated having Dave Zomak here. And I just feel like we're kind of just kind of saying, sure, but not, I don't know the basis of it. So that's all I'll say. Um, is there any public comment or anything to people? Is anyone in the audience?
Uh, no, if the board has spoken, again, I I I think this, um, you know, Chris has, I think, spoken on behalf of the town in terms of general, you know, approval of of this, correct, Chris?
Um, I think I have been around enough to know if anyone has, um, an opinion about this. I believe Dave Zomak would have told me if he thought that this property was worth acquiring for the town for agricultural purposes or conservation. He's, um, he's been asking me, you know, when is the planning board going to be um, meeting about this, you know, and he just sent me an email today asking how has the planning board decided about this? So he's totally aware that the planning board is um, considering this, uh, piece of property tonight. And, um, I guess it's too bad that he's not here to talk to you about it.
Okay, um, Andrew?
Yeah, I I think some of the, like, you know, the extra information that Janet talked about, which I thought we need as well, like knowing that it's going to be built out as this incubator, like, is consistent with PRP. So like that would have been useful information as part of the presentation. We have it now, right? And I think from a zoning perspective, like our job, making sure that that, you know, we've we have got, uh, you know, the the parcels are are zoned in such a manner that it helps develop the master plan. That seems like it's consistent. But I I think that's like the level of information I would have would have appreciated sort of in the initial presentation. This is what we're trying to do with it. Because a- as a member of the planning board, I can certainly be supportive of that use in the PRP. So, thanks.
Thank you. Um, I see no other comments from the, or hands raised by the board, so we can go to public comment. And I see Pam. Oh, we got to hand up Janet Keller. Janet, please state your name and address, please.
Janet, you're muted. You need to unmute yourself.
It's late, sorry. Um, Janet Keller, uh, one twenty Pulpin Hill Road, North Amherst. Um, so I just, um, I I I just have a question for you. Um, it, it is, um, a piece of farmland um, that does indeed have flood plains and wetlands on it. Um, and, um, I don't know the either the state law or, um, the zoning law. Um, so I guess my question is, is this strictly limited to you deciding whether to advise the town council to purchase it, um, to take the right of first refusal? Or does it have anything to do with the underlying land in the area surrounding it? And I I just don't know enough about that. But, um, a- as a neighbor and a butter, you know, that's important to me.
Chris, would you like to respond to that?
Um, so there are a number of things to consider here. And I think the primary one is that no one in town has come up with a use for this property. No one has stepped forward and said the town really needs to purchase this land and operate a farm there or you know, farm this property or sell it as a farm and and we absolutely need to have this remain as farmland. This has been zoned PRP ever since I came to town, which is a pretty long time ago. Um, and it's always been the thought of people on the planning board and in town government that this would eventually be developed for PRP, which is professional research park. And so there is, um, you know, a proposal to develop this property for professional research park. So, um, the idea of stepping in and saying, um, no, we don't want that to happen. We want this property to remain farmland. And we're willing to pay one point six million dollars for this property to remain farmland. Um, that would be the statement that you would be making if you, um, recommended to the town council just that. If you were to recommend to town council to purchase this property because you felt like it really needed to maintain as farmland or that it needed to become conservation land. That's sort of running counter to the way this property has been zoned. You know, probably since nineteen seventy two. I'm not, I'm guessing, but you know, I I go back almost that far in town. So, um, that's kind of the choice and so you you need to make a choice to recommend, to make a recommendation to town council. They're the ultimate deciders in this case. But that that would be my, um, that'd be my thought process. The other thought process would be if something is built there and it is a contributing, um, you know, revenue generator, that's a benefit to the town. If the town spends one point six million dollars to purchase the property and it's that money that we didn't have in our budget, we're going to have to go somewhere to get that money. We'll have to go to CPAC or you know, the state or I'm not sure where we're going to get the money, but we'd have to go somewhere to get it. We're taking it out of our operating budget or our general budget or our capital budget. So it it kind of opens up a lot of, um, doors to think about. Um, if you were to decide this land should not be used for PRP, it should be used for farmland and we're going to recommend that the town spend that money to purchase this property so that it remains the way it is right now. That's kind of my opinion about what you're deciding.
Yeah, again, I I actually pulled this up finally, you know, there there certainly are wetland issues. That's not under our purview with the planning commission, but, uh, knowing that the, uh, what is it? The, um, um, the, the, the erupter, okay. Knowing that the erupter project is behind this. I mean, knowing that Dave Zomak has not, you know, said, you know, otherwise Paul Bachmann, anyone, um, I I think this is, this is, uh, you know, a go as far as I'm concerned. Um, again, Amherst has, is overflowing with you know, open and recreational, you know, spaces. And, uh, and and I can't imagine that this property going toward, you know, a development, uh, project in the future would be a detriment, uh, to the town. So, um, I'm good, you know, I know that we don't have everything, all the information that we would like, but, um, um, Tom, uh, maybe you can fill in, you know, some gaps here, but.
I guess what gaps can I help fill in?
What? I I don't, I, did I miss the mark anywhere here? So.
No, I mean, I I I think you, I think Chris said it really well in the message that would be sent to town council um, by a planning board recommendation that the the town council exercised its right of first refusal. You know, I think the, I I can echo Chris's sentiment that I you know, I've I've talked to Dave Zomak quite a bit about this land, this project, and I didn't want to speak for him. Um, but to Chris's point, we're on the town council agenda for Monday. Um, and so if if that, if you get the sense of where the town is at with ac- acquiring this this property. And then, you know, I would I I think Chris brings up a great point of of what the planning board has done. Um, you know, forty years ago with the zoning of it is is as PRP and without an outcry from the folks in town hall that this is a crucial piece. To me, it's, it's probably a hopefully a deliberative but simple decision that that the planning board recommends, um, town council does not exercise the right of first refusal.
Very good. Any, any, uh, discussion, further discussion on the board? I see none, uh, public comment. Good. So we have a motion? Anyone? Andrew?
Make the motion.
Okay.
What's the motion? The motion is that the you, the planning board recommends that the town council not exercise its right of first refusal. Is that the?
Yes, that is the motion.
I'll second. So, uh, any, uh, discussion? Okay, could we just take it a vote then? Um, Andrew?
I.
Um, Doug?
Abstain.
Abstain. Janet?
Abstain.
Um, Johanna?
I.
Uh, did I skip you, Maria? I did.
Oh, approve, yes.
Okay, and I I approve as well. So I think, what is that, four?
Four zero two abstentions.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thanks for talking to everybody. We'll, we'll, we'll see you soon. Stay well. Bye bye.
Thanks. So, uh, next is chapter sixty one, a release request property of Michael J. Stoss and Laurie Stoss. Land on Market Hill Road, map three C, parcel one oh six, which is five point seven five acres.
But that's, I'm going to be presenting that because I don't see anyone. I don't think there's anyone here on behalf of, um, the landowner. And, um, essentially what they're doing, they don't have a purchase and sale agreement here. Um, so presumably the land would be if the town were to exercise a right of first refusal, um, it would have to either be uh, assessed by the town or it would have to be, um, we'd use the assessors, uh, numbers, which I don't have here. Um, but essentially, can can Pam bring up the map?
Yes. Um, I just need a second to remember where I. Um, I just need a second to remember where I put it. It's in here. Now. Sorry about that.
So this is property on Market Hill Road and it's owned by the um, Michael Stoig and Lori Stoig. And they live on Market Hill Road. And they're asking to have this piece of land that is outlined in yellow here. Uh, parcel three C dash one oh six, removed from chapter sixty-one A. And. I believe what they're doing is they're changing the use of the property. The property is currently under chapter sixty-one A, which is agricultural and horticultural. And they are proposing to change the use to. Residential, I believe, although it's not completely clear. But they're not proposing to sell it. Yes, in the bottom of the first paragraph, this letter constitutes statutory notice that the owner intends to convert the parcel to a residential use. From an agricultural use. So that's what they're proposing to do. They haven't given me any more information about that. But you have the packet. And you have any questions? I think there are other maps that um are further down in the packet, aren't there, Pam?
Like in the Highland portions of of Amherst.
That's all Mitchell. This is, this is Stoig. Yep. So here's the map. Map C three one oh six. So there are already buildings on three C nineteen. And they've already taken three C twenty-five, which is that flag lot to the east. They've already taken that out of chapter sixty-one A. And now they want to take out this three C one oh six. And I think the building there is a barn.
We have another map.
And this is um, surveyed map.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's crooked.
So are there questions about this?
Well, I I guess we'd have to ask, you know, has Dave Zomack or anyone else, you know, within the town made a recommendation?
No one has given me any indication that the town is interested in using this property for anything.
But they're aware, they're.
Dave Zomack knows that this is coming before the county would tonight. And he sent it to town council, just like he sent the other one. To town council to make sure that they were both submitted in proper form.
Okay, so that's just kind of like. Um. What is it? Some sort of approval?
If if he had thought that the town should purchase this property, he would have told me.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Presumptive approval, that's what I was thinking. So, um, good. Any, uh, I see a couple, Andrew and then Janet?
Yeah, I'll just say, I I know this, this property and the Stoats family, you know, they're related to Atkins. I'm not exactly sure how they're. Tied into the family, but um, I've driven by this thing like a gazillion times over decades. I don't know that I've ever really seen it, seen it farmed. Like, it's sort of an awkward lot, just triangular, and it's almost on a plateau. Um, it's got sort of hills. Uh, on the other side of Market Hill. It doesn't really seem like it's particularly useful for farming, and I can't imagine that. This is one, I will say, like, I feel comfortable with this one, knowing, knowing the property and seeing that it, to me, it seems like. That it's probably not a very viable use for the the town's money to pursue, to preserve for farming. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Janet?
Um, I'd like to first express the hope that if this, the Stoatses have this in agricultural, um, sixty-one A. For tax purposes, that they are indeed farming. But um, I don't know anything, I just wanna, I just hope that when we get these requests in the future to make recommendations. We have any, some information about the land and its value or its use or its potential use or its record, anything. I just, I I can't vote on something. Where I know nothing about it, so I'm gonna abstain again. But I really hope this doesn't keep happening and. So, sorry.
Yeah, I think probably, Chris, just having a little something from the town. In terms of a formal memo would be helpful. Um. But I think we can read between the lines and and understand the town's position uh on this. So, any other comment? Andrew, your your hands up, that's.
I was just gonna say, at the risk, no, just at the risk of calling the IRS upon, so it's like, I'm sure they do use it for farming and I just haven't paid close enough attention. Um, you know, we should probably do site visits for these things, right? I mean, like, it's it's easy enough to go there and we get our eyes on it. That would probably happen. That's all.
And um, I should probably invite Dave Zomack to come to these meetings when we're talking about chapter sixty-one A, release requests.
Uh, Doug, please?
May I make a motion that we uh recommend to town council that they not. Exercise their right of first refusal to purchase this land.
Good, uh, I'll second that. Uh, any discussion? Seen on, uh, let's take a vote. Um. Maria? Andrew?
Hi.
And Doug?
Hi.
Janet?
Abstain.
And Johanna?
Hi.
And I am a yes as well. So it's six, excuse me, five. Yes, one abstention. Good, okay. So, uh, topics not, excuse me. Oh, okay. Uh, topics not reasonably anticipated forty hours prior to this meeting. Anything, Chris?
I don't have any topics.
Okay, very good. Form A and R subdivision applications?
No, no forming in our.
Okay, upcoming ZBA applications?
No, not tonight.
Yeah, we we know, we we're meeting every week. I mean, we probably can like just peel the the this part of the agenda. Um. Quite frankly, um. Are you okay with that? Just go right to the board of the chair, uh, or the staff?
Well, so you could decide that this is a regular meeting of the planning board because it's on the schedule. And next week you're holding kind of an irregular meeting. So on irregular meeting nights, maybe we could drop all of these things. And regular meeting nights, we go through them. How's that?
Okay, all right. So um, with regard to uh planning board committee and liaison reports, uh, under valid planning commission, I have nothing. Uh, CPC A, Andrew?
We're not meeting. Uh, we just got a newsletter sent to us. I'll I'll flip it over to Chris and you, Jack, maybe just watch the board to them. For you all to review at your leisure.
Okay, and then the ad commission?
Uh, we did get a notice from our staff member that the ad commission will not be meeting until further notice.
Okay, uh, uh, okay, and then Tom's not here for the design review board. And then Christine, uh, oh. I I, we we can't really get into this, but again, thank you, Janet, for correcting, you know, the the process chart. Uh, has been, you know, we have the wrong one. And but we'll, we're gonna be talking about zoning bylaws. Quite a bit uh next Wednesday. So I think we can, we can, you know, attack it at that time. And again, you know, it's, you know, it's late. But Janet, you okay with that?
I'm sorry, what? Okay with what?
Just saying that 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 process with with the CRC. Um, we have, we now, we have a chart that has been distributed to the planning board that is. Uh, we have the right one now.
No, I.
We have updated one. And we're gonna be talking about zoning bylaws and then that's all we're gonna be talking about next week. So I'm just thinking that we're we're gonna be good to go to take that discussion up then.
So, but I think it's a strange irony that I voted against this process chart a year ago and nobody who voted for it. See, I mean, just, I would like to see us implement the process we agreed to and not in this hell's rush to zoning amendments. Because we're talking about the things next week and they're supposed to have a hearing, another public hearing. And I still don't know when these have been sent, you know, they've been submitted to us for for for, I just, I don't understand. It seems like we're going faster and faster on less and less information, following random processes. And. You know, we're having here, public hearings scheduled way before we're ready. I don't know why. Um, a year ago, we decided to like put the zoning subcommittee on hiatus and that would be the committee that would go through things. And here we are in the situation where we're just kind of like. Every week is a new week and, you know, everybody's looking at the wrong chart. And what difference does it make if nobody implements it? I'm just really disturbed by this whole thing. I just wish.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, Chris is gonna speak, but I I believe that uh, we can continue the hearing. If we're not ready, we don't need to.
Why, why do we have a public hearing until they're ready?
But I think we 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 are at the disposal of the town council. I mean, we we.
We're a planning board.
But let's hear what Chris has to say here.
We could decide our own schedule with Chris.
I, I just wanted to say that during the meeting, I did um, email Mandy Jo Henneke. To find out um, her opinion about when things were, things were submitted to the planning board. So in her opinion. Um, the town council referred the rezoning of fourteen A thirty-three, the CVS parking lot. To town, to the planning board on May twenty-fourth. And then she has given me other dates. Um, she's given me the motions for all of the other referrals. And I will forward this to you um, this evening, so you can all read it. And then if you have questions, we can talk about it next week. But I just wanted to confirm that in her mind. Um, the town council had referred this to the planning board on May twenty-fourth, and that's the date of submittal. And that's the date that the sixty-five day clock starts. So.
I would love to hear from Lynn Greismer and KP Law, but what is, what it means to submit to the planning board. And why we're not following the the old process, the process they started. So I, you know, these are legal issues.
Very good. Um. Moving on, again, report to the chair, I have nothing, report to staff.
See you next week, right? See you next Wednesday.
Like such.
Thank you very much.
Meeting every week. Uh, okay. Um, in adjournment, thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
I, we we all are doing a lot, I think, to keep up with, you know, what. Town council, I guess, and and and, you know, Paul Bachman and et cetera. So I I'm very appreciative. Of everyone being available as much as we have. So it's um. Anyway, good night.
Good morning, everyone.